Regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Stand here if you would please, read our mission statement and take your call. At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in global community. Board member Telta?
Here.
Board member Cunningham?
Here.
Board member Alani?
Here.
Board member LaShawn?
Here.
Board member Bertel?
Here.
I'm board member Fortune and I'm here, and board member Sutton is absent with COVID, so we go to the forum. We also have our two student representatives here with us, Elizabeth Schaefer and Joseph Biziyo. Looking for a motion to approve our agenda, so move. Grab support.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, so move. Grab support. Second. Mr. Walmsley.
Thank you. You should have received a revised personnel report in the morning tonight, because we don't have a second meeting in December to get any of that possible. So it is unupdated as well as the backup that goes with it. I did not receive any questions regarding the member claims and accounts. Just remind listeners that count is in the fact.
Any discussion from the board?
No, just thank you for the answer to my question about the JV girls basketball coach.
Yes, there. I should have reminded you. You should have got an email today to clarify the question.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is our student recognition for our RCS holiday cards. Mr. Walmsley.
Tonight, we celebrate the creativity and talent of our Richmond Community Schools students for this year's district holiday card competition. We've been doing this for now several years, and it's always one of our highlights that we can celebrate among many in the district. Each year, we ask students to design artwork to put on the cover of our annual holiday card that's mailed out to all of our families in the district. It goes to other school districts in Macomb County. It goes to all of our elected officials from our city governments, as well as our staff in our district. This year, we received 69 submissions across all grade levels from first grade through 12th grade, showcasing their imagination and artistic skills. These were pretty remarkable and a very challenging decision for those that had to decide which one. So tonight, we're here to recognize the 12 winners here. So when I call your name, if you would come up here, and then at the end, when you're done, recipients, we're going to move over to the backdrop over there, and we're going to do a group shot. So here's my grid. I'm ready. We'll do it over there. Any board members that would like to join us for a group shot? Over at the end. Our first recipient is Charlotte. From 4th grade. This is Charlotte. Just so that everybody knows, Charlotte's receiving not only her certificate, but also her original artwork that she submitted, and a copy of the Christmas card or holiday card that would be sent home to family. So they have a book. Our second recipient from 2nd grade is Theodore Gobis. Our third recipient is Braden Finley. I don't know if I saw him here. From 4th grade, we have Olivia Stavna. From 5th grade, Mela Churness. From 6th grade, Isabella Kenny. From 7th grade, Clayton Turner. From 8th grade, Audrey Poole. From 9th grade, Leila Kudersky. From 10th grade, Jordan Jones. From 11th grade, Ray Lynn Jones. And from 12th grade, Ava Mathman. If the board would like to join us, just so the audience knows, the board's up there. The students will be able to get home with them. If you want to get one last look, this will be the time. I would just like to give a special thank you to Emily Sidney for coordinating this. Pat over here, she has helped us stuff these humble, lucky thousands of people out there and help set up for pride facilities. So we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our winners.
And there are extra cookies, so grab them anyway. Yes, yes, they are warm and big.
Our winners, make sure you pick up your bag. Your bag was open there. Next item on our agenda is our BWAC sportsmanship summit. We have to invite Mr. Friend.
Thank you. So I've also got Joe and Elizabeth here with me. In September, which seems like forever ago now, we took six of our student athletes over to Belmont. And each school in the conference brought six student athletes. We're students that are leaders in the student section. And we discussed a variety of topics. So kind of how the event went, we had a keynote speaker open it up. Brad Bush is one of the executive directors at the MHSAA, longtime football coach. He's in charge of baseball for the MHSAA. He's also in charge of officiating. So he talked about the official shortage we're seeing across the board, and some things that students can do to help not only retain officials, but help us recruit some new ones. Then we had a series of breakout sessions where the kids were able to be in groups with students from other schools and with athletic directors from other schools. And they touched on topics such as school culture, student section expectations, and kind of themes and different things that different schools do. We talked about officiating, and we talked about school participation and how to get more students involved, what certain schools and programs do to get kids involved in different activities. And then the last activity we did was a presentation from the Coslex Athletic Director and myself, where we talked, kind of again circling back to that officiating thing, and trying to give some of these students, a lot of whom are upperclassmen, an idea of how to get involved as officials, and primarily how much these officials get paid. I think that was eye-opening for some of them to hear those numbers. We had a complete war prices, right? Game had the music going. But some of them were like, oh wow, that's a good chunk of money I can make when I'm at college or between jobs, or after work and stuff, after I graduate. So I brought Joe and Elizabeth along with that, and they kind of wanted to share some of the things they liked, and some of the things they kind of looked forward to at the next one. So I'll start with Elizabeth.
I have to write notes, because I could not remember a lot. But so I liked when we split up into groups, because you got to have you with different kids from different schools, and you learn about their student sections, you learn about their athletic programs, and you kind of like could learn new things that you could do for your own, like the student section themes. I know minions team up quite a bit. And then they talked about solutions to problems, like enforcing a boundary for basketball games so students aren't getting in the referee's ways, which I thought was a really good idea, because it is a safety hazard. For the boundary official, I did like the interactive game. I hope we can put something like that into the one we host next year, right? And then, so for the future, I know it brought up about life after athletics, so like how to coach, or like how else to get involved after you graduate. And I thought that'd be really nice, coming from someone who will be graduating next year, too. And then I also want to talk more about getting students more involved, almost like a course carousel maybe for the 8th graders that come in, just while they're looking at courses. You can look at sports athletics.
Hello. I as well attended the sportsmanship summit, and there were a lot of things that I really enjoyed. Primarily, the idea of having one person from each school mixed out into these breakout groups. It allowed a nice level of diverse input from people all around the county, and it was really eye-opening just to hear what some people had to say from different schools. And I really appreciated the ideal topics. They were very thought-provoking and provided a lot of discussion about good sportsmanship, not just among athletes, but among the members of our community, such as student section engagement and whatnot. It was just, it was really nice to hear what people had to say and the ideas that were shared amongst each other. What I would have liked to have done there was a more organized level of breakout groups. I think it was just because of the selected amount of people that were there. Eight schools, only six people. So it kind of, some kids ended up staying in the same group and not really getting the chance to break out and branch with other people, which us being able to have an opportunity to host it next year, it would be awesome to sort of tackle something like that, maybe just bring more people. That way, we can have a more thorough, a more thorough like, yeah, 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 more ideas, more of an organized fashion on how people, more organized way for them to share their input. That's what I'm looking for. What would also really help as well, in order to note some of these wonderful ideas, is to maybe supply just something simple, like pencil and paper, rather than have a lot of it. We just kind of had it in our heads, where we could note, have things down, so that way, when we were to project them to everybody and support and add our ideas, it would also work in a more organized fashion. Otherwise, it was a really well-done event, and I was very happy and proud to have been able to attend. And I'm looking forward to seeing it grow in the future, especially being as it will hopefully be brought here to Richmond next year. So thank you.
Yeah, so like both Joe and Elizabeth said, next year, we volunteered to host it in September, and we actually set, Brian and I set the date so that it doesn't line up with the superintendent's conference, so some of them can have the opportunity to attend as well. But we're still kind of hammering out the details. We kind of got a rough idea of a lot of the topics we want to cover, and some of the things we want the kids to take out of it. We're just kind of hammering out all the details on that, so.
I have two questions. How do you, how do the students get to be part of the?
Yeah, so each of us athletic directors was told hey, bring three boys, three girls. And we all kind of agreed, we kind of targeted students that have significant leadership roles on the teams that they're in, or leadership roles within the student body. We also looked at, okay, we all kind of know who our student section leader is, the person in charge of all the themes and getting the kids there. Usually, the kid in front of the student section that we have to tell to keep backing up. So we like to bring that student or students. So really trying to figure out what students can we bring that'll have the most opportunities to spread what they learned here to the other students. I chose to bring Joe and Elizabeth. One, because I think they're both leaders on their team, but also because they have this forum as well that they can share that out, too.
And then my second question, how do you guys, how do you see yourselves going about to share? Like I think the student section is very interesting and how that works. And I think I had asked you guys, like how does that get out there? How do the kids know what to wear that night and that kind of stuff? So how are you going to go about to get more kids to come and be involved and be part of that section?
Would you like to go about that, or whatever?
I mean, I know that social media is a new one, so. I know that we talked about, I know I talked about something, like posting flyers around the school. I think we talked about the last staff meeting.
Yep.
Just more advertising in general. It's on the announcements, so maybe just kind of side when you're just sort of, feels a little bit of a problem. I think that's the main thing that people feel if they can't come in and join the team, too.
I would have to agree, an increased amount of promotional material. We end up kind of getting stuck with more of a word around the school type thing, where, you know, we can have posters in school announcements during the day. Social media posts, whether it be on the Richmond Athletics page and stuff like that, to sort of, yeah, promote that engagement and have everyone feel welcome, and get a great idea on what to do in order to partake in the events.
And even students just encouraging each other and going, have fun.
Because I think it's important to know, to know what's happening and be invited or feel welcome to do it. That increases the good experience of being invited.
It's fun. It's fun. And I like what, they actually brought it up on the bus ride back with the getting more students involved, is we have a number of programs that just have a high school program and don't necessarily have a middle school program to feed it. So they brought up on the bus ride back, having somebody at the carousel of courses when the 8th graders come over, like, hey, this is when, this is when girls golf starts in the fall. This is how you get a hold of Coach Rocket. Or boys soccer, this is, you know, how do you get involved with these teams? Then those students don't feel like they're out of the loop.
Anybody else have any good questions? Thank you very much for the presentation.
I'll just add that the BWAC group, superintendents, principals, and so forth, have been trying to expand outside of athletics, so in parts, it will be a BWAC art show. We're a part of, it will be hosted at Yale this year. We're looking at other future activities that we can do as a BWAC organization that isn't just athletics, or the robotics. And they used to have the, had a conversation with Mrs. Shaq regarding the banned extravagance and the challenges that face. So are there other things that we could do that could, as a BWAC school, come together and have our students interact?
Okay, next item on our agenda is our 25-26 middle school, high school course catalog.
You're probably asking yourself, it's December 9th, we're talking about a course catalog that usually, at least the last nine years I've been here, has always been in February. So another thing that we have learned over the last couple of years is we are typically behind, when we look at other districts, in the scheduling process when we wait in February, and trying to maximize not only the scheduling, the staff, and so forth, to get to that. Students scheduled before, before a lease for the summer. We have a good, solid schedule that we're preparing, because once we come back in August, we hit the ground running. So tonight, you're going to get a presentation on the proposed 2025-26 school year middle school and high school course scheduling guide. In your packet, there is a, now a copy of this, but also a summary sheet that talks about what the pages. Billy and Jennifer, our local principals here. Andrea, the table and high school are here to answer any questions. And then this will come to you for final approval in January. So if there's any questions between now and then, please don't hesitate to get them to us so we can answer them.
Brian, well, that was the January 13th meeting, you think?
It will probably be the January 27th meeting, because the 13th is your organizational meeting.
Right, that's okay, that's okay.
The 27th, which would still put us a month ahead of them who've had previous.
Right.
I'm going to turn it over to Billy.
We will walk through this. Some things are very simple, date change type changes, and some don't spend much time on those. And others are more intentional, a little bit bigger changes. So certainly, those points will be a question. Don't hesitate to let us know what you can answer. So of course, we will change the date off the top, and as you'll see, this follows right along with that summary sheet, so that's the change on page one. Anything that's marked up in that kind of pinkish fuchsia color is just a note for us that we'll change that. So when the board positions and everything changes, we know that we need to change that once everything's finalized. So that's still a little work in progress. Staffing changes, myself being added. And this actually should have probably been changed last year, but there was some adjustment of where the counselors were stationed, so that is now accurate. Of course, table of contents will be updated once all the page numbers are finalized. Just kind of a preview of a change here on page four. We'll talk about a change with the, what was the basic honors design, which was a course at the middle school for high school credit, but we'll talk more about that when we get to that section. The course is still there, just the credit is a little different. Making our way to page 20. Changes on these pages that I'm zipping by. Okay, so here is that change that I just mentioned. The basic honors design, previously said for high school credit course, is now just an honors design and is not going to be a course for high school credit. That one. Do you want to talk to anyone about?
I was going to say, I don't mind talking. So one of the things that we've noticed here at this high school, as we've gone to the seventh period day, is that my understanding that this was put into place prior when we had six classes, and to give kids the opportunity to take AP classes, to be able to take all of the band and choir, CTE classes that are double-locked, giving the students the opportunity to earn this high school art credit prior to coming into high school was the opportunity. One of the things that we're noticing is that students don't necessarily need that option, and those that are taking it in the 8th grade level, when they've met all of those requirements, they've gotten to their junior or sometimes senior year, and have met all of the high school required classes, they're like, well, there's nothing else for me to take. Why did I, you know, why do I need to still come full-time? You know, just making, you know, kind of some comments like that. And so we started having the discussion about what the background and the purpose of originally this class being offered for high school credit. And through our discussions, felt that students having that opportunity to take this class, not for the high school credit, would still give them the opportunity to explore art just as much as they wanted, but it wasn't necessarily lining up with what was being taught in the 9th grade or the basic design class at the high school. And so that was kind of the background that I have on this. I don't know. Is this anything else? Yeah, I think we're good.
And I appreciate them stepping in and helping. Obviously, they kind of explained it to me, too, but they've been here, they kind of lived it more than I have, so I appreciate them being able to give us some of that background that I might not have.
Can we ask?
Yes.
Maybe as an honors class, is that what?
That was always in the title. We did, or was that, I don't know, I'm mistaken. So that was the flip, keeping it as honors, but not having it be for the high school credit. So that is still was an enhanced art class, more rigorous than your traditional, but just not for the high school credit. And we've got a couple of changes in the computers class. So this is the computers for grades four and five. So kind of again, just in conversation about what students were actually getting out of this course. The course description was adjusted for both of them. So you can see both. Utilizing the Microsoft Office products, keyboarding, online projects. Certainly, those pieces that were there, that traditional computers, but really taking it to that next step further to help them really increase their curiosity and knowledge around 21st century careers is an additional piece there that we really wanted to highlight and make sure was recognized within these courses, rather than it just being kind of that very traditional computers side of class. It's really taking it to the next level, so that's what the new description and title of the course is designed for.
So if you're thinking from this side, looking at the pathways and careers that students have available, and using technology to get that exploration of those careers. Our goal is to get kids understanding, because at the end of that 5th grade, when they're hitting 6th grade and stuff, they're starting to do their EDPs, their plans of where they want to go for the future. We're trying to lay a foundation here in helping the skill set in these two community departments.
A slight change in the, you'll see the specific code program, Python, has been stricken from a few of the courses. That's just not the specific one that is being used there, but they are still working on writing code, just using some different tools there, so we just didn't want to pigeon. tools there. So we just didn't want to pigeonhole that one specific. The video production course changed a little bit. Andrew, you might have some more background on that one. You want to speak to that one?
So, you know, we do announcements every day. We do announcements over the PA system every day. And what we discovered last year was they were getting, the students were getting an announcement during second hour, and then they were being asked to watch the, the video announcements with the exact same information during third hour. So we thought that was a little too much time off task. And so we wanted to condense it a little bit. So, um, instead, and in working with Ms. Gallagher, we decided, instead of doing the daily news, which we've kind of gotten away from this year, we're doing just schoolwide video updates. Uh, there sometimes could be a couple of times a month. It could be all about, um, showing all of our students what, like a visual of what our behavior expectations are, um, in various areas around the school. And so instead of doing that daily news, so to speak, we're just calling it video updates so that it could be a little bit more broad in nature.
Then we have page 33 is our next change. Um, so very much, uh, in the same, uh, background with the help and the PE, um, with the arts. So there's been a change there to those course descriptions to match those high school course descriptions. So at the middle school level, um, if we were to flip ahead to the high school section, these now just match, they're an exact match for the high school to the middle school, um, credit, um, course description. Just tightened up, cleaned up language for the Spanish culture classes. Not really a change in the content, but just, um, just made it a little bit more precise in the language there. The course description for the STEM and Asians class and the sixth and seventh pre-steam class, that has changed because there is a new focus on that. Um, Ms. Gallagher has attended a few different conferences where they're really able to bring in the agricultural side to the STEM, um, courses. And so she's really been able to leverage a number of resources to bring that in. And so with that, again, the course description for the class has changed and is a little bit different than it used to be, again, to include that agricultural piece with, with STEM. So just adding that next layer of it and just clarify that.
And part of the change of this, Ms. Gallagher applied and received a grant, so the front of the middle school turned on the curved driveway. In the future, we'll be installing a greenhouse for students to participate in the programs.
Again, I did just clean up language. Um, we, you know, Andrew took a look at what the current documents that she has for the career pathways included. And we just kind of tried to make sure that they were mimicking those. Again, Talent Free Way is not the tool that we use any longer. Um, so, you know, anything that was specific reference to that, we took out. Um, Michigan Virtual is, has a little bit different title. They don't use the word diversity with their title anymore. And my talent app is not something used anymore. So again, just updated that to be the current, um, tools that are actually used for the pathways now. We'll see a few changes throughout this section of graduation requirement. Not that we're actually changing anything that was already established, but just cleaning it up, right? So now we don't need to see the class of 2024 anymore, as that group will be moved out. Um, just clarified the language by adding total required credits down at the bottom of the chart there.
Is there, um, I'm sorry, yeah, the, is there a reflection of when you add the additional classes that were going to be considered?
It's in there. It was approved, the, um, the financial literacy, it's on page 45, that was approved last year, beginning with the class of 2028. So that's listed in that chart as required. And so on the, the chart that, uh, Billy referenced by taking the class of 24 out, you'll see under there, uh, personal finance, and if you go all the way to the last column, 20, you'll see it now added in there as far as required.
So again, if we look at page 46, I think this is, again, there was just a redundancy in this chart. That information is already listed on the chart above. So we feel that it needed to be pulled out and listed again. Continuing, again, taking out information that relates back to classes that have already been graduated, but it's by the time this document is in use. Just a little clarifying language here. No student will require that additional language. No student will be exempt from any graduation course requirements except by approval of the educational planning and placement committee. Um, so this is language around students that would be, you know, essentially saying they have to take all of those courses listed in the chart unless there is a personal curriculum or an individual educational plan that identifies a specific reason why that student would be exempt. And again, that will be a community decision.
So if you look at the strike through language, this is clear because we, really the word course was, um, added. Um, because the old one said graduation requirements. We don't, you obviously, the board sets the requirements, except what, what courses you have to take. The other aspect is, um, for someone to prove us a physical disability, you know, following the IEP or, or personal curriculum or something, we'd have to, that's someone we can change or alter graduation requirements, as we issue by this page.
The official, that means me, who identified and accepted. Again, this chart, if you were to look at the two previous charts that we referenced, this would be a repeat of those. So we're just cleaning that up and not having it there a second time. There was a change in the law around, um, what it, what we must provide for a student if they test out of a course. So that's what this changes on page 48. Um, so the updated language accurately reflects what the law requires. Um, so credit for a course earned by a student through this process by testing out, um, would be used to fulfill a course or course sequence requirement and shall be counted towards the required number of credits needed for graduation. Uh, but it would not be part of the student's GPA. On the transcript, it would be indicated as a TO standing for tested out for any course by which credit was earned in them. Again, that is just a legal change that we had to follow. On graduation participation, um, the addition here is really to indicate that students would have to meet any outstanding fees by its obligations to the district. So at that time, graduation, whatever they owe still to the school would need to be paid or brought back, or whatever the item might be, um, in order to participate in graduation. So just making sure that that was very clear there.
And this language is identical, the board approved in the handbook last August. Just kind of two spots.
Sure they mimic each other.
How, how are those communicated out? Like what people, what, what students owe?
So there are a couple of ways. So it is, we recently found a little glitch in it, but there, it, it powers schools. So where the students, wherever the parent would log on, all of the students are logging in to see their information. There is a section there for fees, um, and outstanding items there. Um, we did, very recently, finally, that there was a couple of specific things that for some reason weren't playing through. So we are actively working on that right now to make sure those are very accurate. And then there may be other additional ways that you live within the building.
Yeah, just in-house, the community service hours. So the number that their, you know, their total is at, we put it on the progress reports. We put it on report cards. Tricia Honnold, who oversees that, once we especially get past the first of the year, she'll start doing the monthly updates, like, "Hey, you owe this many hours." Um, if it's anything else in regards to an obligation, if it was a detention that someone owed, you know, they owed us an hour after school or something like that, um, that would obviously come from the front office, either myself or Ms. Borwick. Uh, but really, as we start getting closer and closer to those dates, there are topics at our weekly Monday meetings and usually conversations with kids, sometimes every day at lunch, like, you know, or anytime we see them, "Hey, remember, this is what you owe us." But really, because we are, we have a lecture being so small between athletics, extracurriculars, you know, fines, fees, computer technology, all of that stuff, we're able to really communicate and make sure that the kids know what they need, as well as their parents do. Because we obviously start that communication home early as well.
And we have had families who, um, we've worked with, either plans or payments to owe, to honor, or, um, we also have people in the community that have come in to write the checks, to wipe out lunch balances and so forth. So there's a lot of that that happens.
Invoices are also sent, time that the fees are assessed in power schools, invoices are sent.
Make every effort to try.
This next section, um, in the miscellaneous section on page 49, um, we just wanted to clarify the language, which talked about that a student could repeat a class if they received a core grade. So we made that a C plus or lower, um, which was, uh, we chose that grade because that is what you would use to, um, test out. So when you were testing out, C, C plus is that grade cutoff. So we kind of just wanted to keep it the same there. And it would still be exempt from the GPA, just clarifying that language there. For these, a couple of drawing classes and a couple of the art classes here, we'll see that some language for the prerequisites was, um, updated. Um, so again, this one referred back to that eighth grade course, which of course now we wouldn't have moving forward for the high school credit. Also, they do not require teacher recommendation for the drawing one class.
And if you recall last February, when we did this year's catalog, a lot of the recommendations for prerequisites were adjusted at that time. Uh, our goal is that if a kid or student wants to be in those classes, we're running in many barriers for them. That's what they really want to be in, explore that path. However, I'm trying to say all classes have a exemption to agree with. There are some that still have because they build upon each other.
Like drawing three is a required drawing too. You have to keep taking them. But as long as you did that and you were successful, you would keep going. Um, here, we just clarified the language. Um, again, the, to, this is related to the world language requirement being, if, if the students are taking, um, certain CTE classes. So if a student is a CTE completer, they do not need that second year of world language. So that is there. That was originally a temporary law put into place and now it is, they have extended it to adopt that. Just a little clarifying language on the course description for accounting. Yep.
Um, one of the things, and I've talked about this in CTE presentations, as we're switching over from Perkins four to Perkins five, it's been a gradual process. And in doing so, the state now is requiring, and as we switch from the segments to the competencies, students must test for a credential in each class. So the state of Michigan has identified specific credentials that they say, if you're taking accounting, the kids have to test in one of these different tests that the state has chosen are related to whatever the class is. So what we've done, as we've worked with the teachers and also the county, switching from Perkins four to five, we've just added into each of the course descriptions what test or what credential the students will be testing for. We, we cover all of the costs for the students, similar to the AP tests, is we're, you know, kind of making you take it, we're going to cover it. Um, and that's through our 61A added cost funds. But what you'll see on there is you'll start seeing what credential our students are actually taking in that class. So that's just what some of the additions are for the next couple pages.
And we're getting to accounting there. In this case, I got to clarification on prerequisite. In order to be in the AIS heavy equipment two, you would need to take level one. And in order to take three, you would take one and two. Um, this one is a little tricky. Um, there's, interesting with heavy equipment, um, free, the students, if they are taking that third year, they're technically already completer. So where we have that language within the CTE courses about being a completer, typically in that last year of the program. In this case, they are considered a completer after year two. And so then this third year that they might be taking it as a senior, they take it as a sophomore, junior, and now taking it again as a senior, um, they're kind of considered like a completer plus. So it's almost like that internship piece of the course. Um, but they have already completed the technical requirements for that CTE completion.
Are they, what are they test for?
So, no, they have not switched over. Um, there's actually, it's called AED, but not like the AED we're used to. Um, there's an AED test that, um, there's taught that that's what heavy equipment would be. Uh, but because AIS really is the only provider of the heavy equipment CTE program, um, that's kind of what we're thinking. But they're not on the docket as of now to switch yet. So there's a couple of programs that we haven't seen the timeline yet. Um, but it would probably be like the 26, 27, or 27, 28 school year, um, because they've announced up to that point. But I have not seen heavy equipment come through yet. So they don't necessarily have any.
Um, the automotive technology class has been removed, um, was not running, sort of at this point.
We, we have no facility to run this. And by the time we, kind of lock in an agreement, we're going to be at a point that we're going to probably, we'd have to start the process over. What you also are going to see in the criminal justice coming.
Again, just in addition to that, uh, requirement that Andrew spoke about from that, these multiple courses, that's what's there is what they would be getting their credential in. And then like Ms. Robinson just mentioned, criminal justice, same thing if not, you had a teacher. Uh, so we're, right now, we would be at that point where we'd have to start the process over if we were to continue to run this program.
And just so the board knows on the criminal justice, it's not, for mine, it's not necessarily obviously that we wouldn't consider going into the future. But I think we need to look at it in a bigger scope of some of the resources that we have within the district involved within this realm and see if we can maximize its effectiveness.
This change to culinary arts is, um, there was a time when you could take, a student could take the class for one hour or a two-hour block in the day. It's no longer offered both ways. It is only offered as a two-hour block now. So we just moved that one hour option from the course, right?
And that was strictly because of the sixth period day. Two hours, two hours, the prep, and left one hour block. So.
This course does not require the teacher recommendations. That was removed. Again, for the education and experiential learning, a same kind of idea as that student going on to an additional year is a completer plus. So same type of language as we saw in the AIS section for that last year of education course. Just to be sure that we're meeting whatever is the current law around internship, we kind of made this language slightly more vague. So it's indicating the student must meet and follow all state of Michigan CTE and people accounting requirements as related to the work-based learning. At a time, it was 200 work hours per session, but that's not necessarily the case for every course and, and every internship. So by just making that statement that they would leave the law allows us to make sure that whatever that was, we will need it. And that one is just, uh, the credentials students will be earning. Marketing also has that complete completer plus opportunity if a student goes on to take it for that additional year. Theater, uh, again, the credentials that were needed to, um, utilize it as a CTE course could not be met. A big piece of that is that partnership piece that's required, um, and the advisory board and those pieces. So, uh, due to that, we did need to move the theater program out to, um, the arts program. So we'll see that later in the course deck. Um, but this is, that's the layer. It's just not listed under CTE anymore.
And one of the things, just to comment on that, with the business partnership, it needs, according to the state, there needs to be career paths. And so we have a huge partnership with Richmond Community Theater, but those are, those are volunteers. Those are people that are doing it for the passion, the love of theater. Uh, they're not people that are creating or making a profession out of it. And so even though we were allowed, we had them as part of our advisory board, they weren't industry professionals, according to from the state's lens. And so that's where we continue to get tripped up. to from the state's lens, and so that's where we continued to get tripped up because we were not able to identify business partners for a career pathway in the field in the local area, but I think that seeing the value in the program, and especially the value that it's brought to the school day for so many of our students, obviously still being able to offer it under the realm of the performing arts area, and not necessarily having to follow the career side of things, and more so just the performance and the passion for the arts.
And TV broadcast too allows for the complete completer plus, see that again. At one point, advanced placement, computer science was offered only at New Haven Community Schools, but we do now offer that here at Richmond, so we removed the option for going offsite. Slight change in the math here at the beginning overview section, the math-related courses, so again, these are kind of pulling from those CTE classes, so we had to remove the ones that are no longer being offered, because they cannot earn credit, they're not taking the class, and then the movement of theater out of CTE into performing arts would also make that no longer eligible for the math credits.
I just have a quick question on those CTE courses that we're removing, do we have to use, like, a local auto shop? Do we have to use something in Richmond, or the theater, or whatever?
For the auto program, you have to have a facility that is certified.
ASE.
Facility has to be certified, and for most, it's your auto facilities.
You can only, maybe what you're asking, you can only count so many travel minutes as part of the instructional day, so there is somewhat of a radius that you do have to be cognizant of because of the amount of time kids would be on the bus, and I actually think that is...
It's reference of the CTE section, it says, parents are basically waving, you know, there's so many minutes that kids have to be in a year, they're waving that to allow for travel.
And so ultimately, yes, it's not tied to the city of Richmond or anything like that, but ultimately, we would have to factor in, exactly, so that's kind of the restraint with that, and again, the theater piece, no, it's not necessarily tied to the city of Richmond, but even if we were to go and look at the outskirts, which we did, we did apply, I think, two or three times, and each time, they're just, even if you go in the outside areas, you know, if you get out to Baltimore, even if you're getting to Shell, there's still not professional theatrical performers where, you know, it's just a little bit farther away to kind of help really guide, because that's what the purpose of that advisory board is to guide students and say, hey, if you want to do this as a profession, let me help you, prepare you in this class, and there's, you know, there's not that many individuals around that are able to assist with that.
And then with the criminal justice, is it like, just because we don't have a teacher for it, or we can't seem to find a teacher for it, was that, we could do here, right?
We ran it four years ago, four years ago, is the third year it's running? We ran it, the last, the last time it ran, we did of course, we didn't have kids who wanted.
Okay, so that was the name of the next question.
It felt, oh, we didn't have the numbers to run, so that actual teacher was laid off that year because we didn't have the numbers.
Okay, I think I remember that.
Now, if we have kids that are interested in it, we have to go through the process again, to create the class again, through the state, to have it run as a CTE program.
Because that's every two years.
Every, yes, if a course does not run for three years, then basically we got an alert from the state that says, like, we are not, we are no longer going to view this as an improved CTE class, so then we would start that process again with, you know, identifying a teacher, finding business, industry partners, to really guide and say, hey, this is an area of, you know, career interest and career need, so we would, they do that every three years, just because things change so often, so.
So my next question that would be, you said that we didn't really have interest in that one, but what about, what about the theater and the auto, did we have a lot of interest in that, or?
Well, the theater, we're keeping it, it's just going to be a different part of the catalog.
Right, but it's not going to be like, considered like a CTE course.
Correct, correct. But theater interest has grown, I mean, it's...
Yeah, right.
Do we have to stick in some of the home county, or can we, doesn't Port Huron have some, I know at St. Clair, but...
It's about the travel time.
So are you talking about like a location or business? Well, we have the location, we have the location, it's really about the demand for individuals in the industry, and so there are really, when you build a CTE program, you want to build it off of careers that are in demand, because you want to push down to the students and say, hey, we have a need for teachers right now, so we implement the teacher, or the education general, teacher cadet program. There is not a huge need, I don't want to say need, but there's not a huge demand in our area right now for theatrical performers as a career path. That doesn't mean that there aren't people that do it at community theaters or for fun, but as an actual career path, there's just not necessarily the industry that we have right here to, that a lot of people are going into, so that's where, kind of, that's the big part of the CTE, is that there's the business, the business is driving these classes when we have those advisory board meetings, and so the business partnership is not necessarily in this area that we were able to find, or that was able to say yes, not that, hey, we don't want you to not have a theater program, but specifically tied to a CTE course is not necessarily there in this area.
What about the automotive also? I mean, I know there's a few leaderships in St. Clair, that's one of these.
Automotive is getting in partnership with the facility, when we started the one with HOVARS, it was a year of process. We have nobody at the party, we tried, we reached out to the Ford, we were trying to more, we just, we don't have a facility to run.
And then also understanding, not just the facility, but then the teacher and understanding all of the requirements that also are necessary for that, it was, it's a big undertaking for a local business to then open up, you know, AIS just built, I mean, literally, AIS built a whole separate classroom for our program and our students, and so I think just making sure that it's the right fit, that there's an instructor that is, you know, wanting to teach high school kids, high school auto, if we don't have the facility on site to have to then take someone there, but then also find an employee that would be willing to also teach, is something that can continue to be looked into, but again, because the auto hasn't run now for two years, it's going to drop off anyways, so we would have to start the process again, because it's already been two years that it hasn't run.
So when you talk about the interest, like what happened with the criminal justice, how did we go about finding what interests are there? What do you, what do you do at the high school to know a course to go after, let's say?
Well, I think that you, getting, making sure that you're talking with the students when they complete their educational development plans, they, all the kids do the Zella with the counselor or through their English class, and so looking, looking at those, a lot of times, the kids will just come up and say, hey, why don't we have this, or hey, why is this not running? And they do see, even if you go through the course catalog, there are classes that ran this year that haven't run in the past, I look at the increase in demand for psychology, I think this year too, we also ran philosophy, and I don't know if that necessarily has been something that's run regularly, so AP chemistry is another example, it's been in the course catalog, but it hasn't run for a couple of years, so if there's something that's not there, either teachers can also have conversations, I know we've added courses based off the teacher interest as well, but really it's through, I mean, the kids aren't afraid to let us know what they want, so.
And part of that is, the course that we put in the fourth and fifth grade, the career exploration, getting kids thinking about this earlier, and when they're going through the middle school and high school, they got a path, that's our goal.
So are we, I'm a huge fan of the CTE courses, so that's why I have questions about this, but are we, so we're getting rid of these three as CTE courses, are we, have any intentions of adding any new CTE courses in their place, or no?
For next year, no.
Okay.
Is there a thought that the agriculture focus that maybe is happening at the middle school, would then continue on with a similar course at the high school?
Have we thought about the military option also?
We had a conversation before Andrea was here, during the RLC program, we had, there would have to be an interest survey done for students, if there's an interest for students participating in that, that's a rigorous program, if it's done properly.
And also, just looking at what we have, my last number was that we had 362 of our slightly less than 500 students already participating in the CTE programs.
Awesome.
The more programs we add, it's going to thin out somewhere else, so also being cognizant that, you know, if we bring on some of these, are we, at what, there's always that expense of, so if we bring on, and I think we actually even saw that, like, when we had auto that one year, that really pulled from our AIS numbers, do we, you know, we added three extra sections of the computer programming and video game development when we added AP and the two esports, so those numbers ultimately pulled from somewhere, so I think also being cognizant of giving students those options, but then also knowing that there is a push-pull effect, that if we grow in certain areas, we could ultimately be pulling from somewhere else.
Think of it this way, our enrollment is steadily increasing, think of it as a balloon, if you squeeze the balloon, you're affecting it somewhere, and that's the balance that we're, when you're offering in programs, the other challenge is, the more programs you offer and run, it's called single-day courses, the more prep a teacher is going to have, and that becomes a challenge you do in a quality program, if I've got six different classrooms, I'm teaching and preparing for a day, so we're cognizant of that, and I'd say it's, we've mastered it, because there are some teachers that have to fill a lot of prep, so those are things that we're looking at.
And also like schedule.
Single-day classes.
And the last thing I would say too, with our dual enrollment, which also has increased, we have the opportunity, students have the opportunity, if there is something that they're interested in, they can take it, we have a student that's taking fire science, he wants to be a firefighter, so he's in our EMT program, but the dual enrollment class he's taking at McComb is the intro to fire science class, we also have the opportunity at Michigan Virtual, so if someone's interested in veterinary science, we had someone last year that, no, we don't have a vet science program here on campus, but it still allows them that exposure, so I think, again, we know that quality, you know, face-to-face instruction is the best for students, but especially when it comes to some of these unique situations, sign language is another example, we have kids taking sign language because that's what they want to take as their world language, so we do have those opportunities, I think it's just making sure that the students know they can ask us about it, have those conversations, and just ask questions, and we will figure out a way if we can.
Do you know, do we have a lot of students that sign up for the military or state programs? After graduation, rather?
After, I don't have a specific number, I don't, I'm not sure about that.
There is, there is somewhere we could call it, how many of our students do have less than military after graduation, that's something that I can find out for us. Just cleaning up the language of who geometry is offered too, just with the way the pathways work, there's a little chart at the top of this section, it really is available to all students depending on which pathway, so we just need to make sure that the language in the sections matched that for the geometry students. Here's the personal finance language, the only thing that was changed is, it was really specific on what that end-of-semester activity was, and that's not exactly the same, so we didn't want to, again, be too specific there. Here's where we had to make the change to this section, so this is where the theater course has been moved, and originally it was just RHS music course descriptions, but adding theater here gives us the name to performing arts course descriptions to cover our basis there. Jazz band, again, it was very specific here originally in what was within that band, so that is not as specific, so that again, can be open to students and variety of ways that might play a variety of instruments, just with the note that an addition would be required for this particular class. And here is the theater description, so like, really not much change, just pregnant, we moved it here and then got it set, appropriate to the CTE, very nice, just kind of a traditional theater course. A little bit of cleanup on the physical education, that came from collaboration with the PE teachers, just to make sure that the descriptions match what was actually happening in the classes, Andrea's going to bring that in for us. Body sculpting and another class, I think it's strength and conditioning, which we'll see down below, actually had the same exact course description if we were to go in and read it line for line, so just consolidating that into being just the strength and conditioning course, so if that's what a student is looking for, that's fine, they would just take the strength and conditioning course, and then again, just kind of taking out some of those really specific pieces of the language.
I was just going to say on that, in this area, it was really, it was specific, we're like, you're going to do weights on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and you're going to do, you know, cardio on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and the big conversation is, we don't dictate really what other classes are doing, we don't say, in science, you have to do a lab every Tuesday, Thursday, so we just wanted to make sure that whoever the teacher may be has the autonomy to meet the standards of the state, but not have it dictated in a course description what day specific types of instructional practices would be in a classroom, so.
So adding Spanish one, including grade 12 there, again, with that flexibility with not having a second year of foreign language due to CTE, it would be feasible that a senior student could be taking a first-year Spanish class at this point, so we wanted to make sure that that was an opportunity for them still. We don't anticipate that Spanish two will need to be taught as a virtual class, but we know that we have a deal with that route for our upper-level Spanish classes, so just to be safe, we've added that little caveat here, again, we don't expect that to be the issue that we'll run into, but just in case, we did note that.
Just so, we have Spanish, it was posted all year, and we don't have any app, so we're very limited in the staff that can teach Spanish in our department.
And that is the last question. Anyone have any questions or comments?
I have two, since we're doing this earlier than normal, what about the process for teachers that want to do classes for next year, where does that process, and do they know that this is all being done? I guess my, what is the process? And if you're doing it early, how does that affect a teacher that wants to run a class next year?
So we've had some conversation, the teachers know that, I mean, if they have not had a curriculum review in their department, which most of them had in the last few years, so we're down with the elective, so they know that that time is coming, and so there's been some, some conversation. and so there's been some conversation. We have not had any indication of anyone saying, you know, hey, I really have been thinking about this for next year. And those conversations, it's really just been more about honing in on what we already have going, you know, this course is good, but we just need some curriculum, we need some resources, and that's really been where the conversation has really been focused around this year, so I can't say that there was a really formal, formal process, but certainly a lot of conversation about courses, and that really hasn't been the desire for this year, I think this year is more like stay with what we have, but really make sure that what we're doing, we're doing it really well.
Margaret, I'll add to that, in the past years, we used to send out a survey, to something you're interested in. What we're doing here is we have to reset the timeline. That survey really needs to be out in February if you're interested for next year, so we can begin working on items for next year. With the focus being elective classes, which hasn't, I mean, it really has never happened here, other than new classes coming. I think that's gonna come out in that process, but it really needs to be a January or February, February process that we do, rather than we send this out in the fall, and now we have until February 1st to do so, we gotta shift it back.
And then my other question, looking at those classes, the computer ones in the beginning, and I know this is the year that we're looking at elective sessions, right?
It's not important.
Not important, thank you. So we're already in the process of doing that, we've been meeting and doing all that.
The view is actually beginning January 3rd officially, so conversation, but yeah, the first meeting is scheduled for January 3rd.
So we're gonna meet in January to get the board to vote on stuff by June, is what you're saying.
It would be.
That's when we approve our budget, that's my question.
For like materials and resources and for.
Whatever needs to those classes.
Yes.
You've already approved the budget for this year.
I'm talking next year. We got this course cap, this is talking about next year, so I'm looking at the computer, the video classes, and when we had the conversation about the agricultural class, when we were talking for this year, and what you said that we're looking, we wanna move that into the high school, so what, are we making sure that we've got everything ready for next year for those classes, for teachers to be able to teach them?
Any materials that are coming to the board this school year are for these current courses that are in front of you to update either the pacing or the resources you're using in the class. Next year's budget would be for the courses that we'd be looking at going into the future of next year. So the money that the board set aside this year, is these elective and out, I'm just, maybe you want to do. Let's say the computer class, when we sit down with this veteran, the fourth and fifth grade, we start laying out that computer core and look at what resources we need, that would be coming to you in June, so we order it, and she has it here for the fall.
That was my whole point of my question, is that are we ready? And the classes we're running now, everything, everybody's got what they need in these classes that we're talking about for next year, that we're ready for them to, and then my question, where are we at with the electives, non-core classes? Where is that process?
The non-cores, that's starting in January, we'll come back.
It'll be ready for us in June.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I just have one, it's quick questions, going back to the basic honors design, honors design, despite having the honors title, it is no longer being graded like a high school class, is that correct?
It will probably have similar rigor, the rigor will still be there, you've just been received the high school credit, but it will be designed very much the same.
Gotcha, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is our proposed overnight extended trip request, Mr. Trenton and Mr. Shad.
When I walked out the door, my life's last tour, a B brief, a Friday B brief. I'm just here seeking permission for overnight trip to Gabor, we've been doing this for years, and the purpose of the trip is to different competition and for team bonding activities, and the girls love it. And don't be talking to me about things that they did 10, 20 years ago, all the good times we had together, essentially is the purpose of it. There's no real cost to the school at all, and the girl has to pay for her own meal on Friday, and on Sunday everyone will come back, because we leave in Friday about them arriving back here on Sunday, in the early afternoon, because it's Mother's Day and I don't want to get in trouble. Still, they owe you the legal costs, and if the kids forget the money, or if they can't afford it, we're gonna pay for them. So, Tom, questions?
Okay, thank you very much. We will, we will. Okay, next one is the overnight trip requests to Florida.
Yep, so Coach Evans, I forgot today was the Alma Combe banquet, so he's at the Alma Combe banquet because Logan's getting recognized for football. So he and I have a touch base about this, and like, Coach Storch trip, this is a trip Coach Evans has done for a number of years. They take the kids down to, well, actually, the kids will ride with their parents down to Florida, so you can think of it as they're all having spring break together, or having their own spring breaks together, and the baseball program gets a field where they can scrimmage, they can practice. Last year, they scrimmaged against a couple other Macomb County teams while they were down there. It's open to all levels of the program, and being around the baseball program, I've seen a lot of the positivity that comes out of that, especially from those younger kids and those younger parents, that get a little bit of opportunity with the varsity team, and the varsity kids and the varsity coaches while they're down there. So it kind of gets the kids their spring break while also having some structure with it too. You get them ready for when they come back, because I got some games scheduled for them pretty much right when they come back.
Are they still, are they gonna be playing teams again this year, like they?
Yeah, no, they haven't, they haven't worked out all that schedule of who's gonna be down in St. Petersburg yet, but.
That's the plan.
Yeah, that's the plan, as the line goes up again, so.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Okay, next item on our agenda is another extended trip, this is with Ms. Shad.
Good evening, I, I'm looking to send Claire to the All-State Band concert and for the, during the Michigan Music Conference in January. So Claire went through, again, the rigorous process of auditioning for this event. She, I'm gonna talk about you a little bit, she, like, there was about 160 Claire nettes throughout the state of Michigan, who, for a high school, who made it through even learning the music to audition, and for 24 spots, and Claire was 18 out of the 24 that made it as a freshman in a nine through 12 ensemble. So incredible accomplishment, and last year I got up in front of the board, and we were asking for approval for her to go last year, and I'm like, this may never happen again, and here we are. So it's a testament to her hard work and dedication to her craft. Again, this is throughout the whole state of Michigan, and when you look at the roster of names in schools, they're from much larger schools, much, you know, in different demographics, so they're close to universities and establishments where you can get extra opportunities of performance, but Claire seeks that stuff out here in northern Macomb County, which is, like you were saying, for the CTE stuff, it's hard to find sometimes around here. So she does that, always going above and beyond, and really proud of her here at Richmond, and I just wanna recognize her for that, the all-state accomplishment, second year in a row. So, it's, yeah. So the trip would be, she has rehearsal on Thursday morning, so we'll be looking for her to go January 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, the performance is the 25th. And during her time there, and she knows the schedule from last year, she rehearses all day long, from 8:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. In the evening, they do, like, you can go to the conference, right, with other music educators, you can see the different booths, so you know, she can see the other side of that professionalism of it all and what we do at the conference. And any performances that are going on, she has full access to that during this event. And besides, so we're looking for that opportunity, those three nights in Grand Rapids, and I would be attending as well for, as the teacher there, and supporting her. And the performance, I think, is at 8:45 on Saturday, if anyone is on the 25th of January, if anybody wants to make a drop.
Play the brass player at Central?
She just got done playing all weekend at the honors band for District 16 this past weekend, so that was also something to do.
The difference between this year and last year for the board is at the high school level, we have an academic state that accounts for state competitions. So it's all very built into the budget, because where the middle school doesn't have that line item, which is why the funds were being asked for last year, so we would use that compensation. Really, the, here is just asking for permission for the middle.
Ambulance, power to the women like they do.
If you wanna hear a play, we have a concert on Thursday, it's seven o'clock today, it is sold out, so standing room only.
Any other questions?
Good luck.
Good luck. Next item on our agenda is on paid leave, a vet request, Mr. Shad.
You may, Ms. Yost, this year she contacted me to extend a leave of absence, a paid leave of absence for the 70 period. Background here.
So I'm currently on returning leave, and I'm going to extend it. I believe my return date would be Thursday, otherwise, which would be the last two days of the mini, and then starting a new mini for Christmas break. I always have a crazy for Christmas break, not really the best time to come back, I think. January would be a nice fresh start, we're all reviewing procedures and expectations anyway, and my childcare is not totally available in the next week also, so that's big.
So you, you were supposed to come back this Thursday?
I think it was this Thursday.
Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, the 11. And you're looking to come back from Christmas break.
The teachers, the collective bargaining agreement doesn't officially return it. They have. Yeah, she, she's opposite of F M L A leave, so there's under Article 12, number four, there's a request on paid leave of absence. It says, the playoffs take a return leave without paid return date, must be the logical break in the school year ID's number.
So the days that they're given are either what they've accumulated, or they qualify in the sick bank, the bank of days that are paid, called the sick bank. And there's certain criteria, and so at some point, for some employees, they may have a bank of days. I believe Ms. Yost, relative to you in the district, so she hasn't accumulated all the days to be covering all the pay, which is why you have the option here that it could be unpaid, which is what you're requiring.
I had partial pay.
Correct, yeah.
So how many days have you been out so far, I guess is the question, because there's a sub.
End of sub term, beginning of sub term?
Yeah, my first day that I was out was December 16th, so I have 60 days, and Wednesday.
And then we've had the same sub in the.
Apparently, Ms. Deal was, there might have been a day she was out, so forth.
I do that, yeah, and so if, if we were to approve this, the plan would be that that person would.
She would just stay in there in the same position, that's the plan.
I'm not, I just, this is just a weird question, Jamie, but, and I may be off, but in your stuff that you wrote, you said, it was part of Ms. Yost's letter, that during her absence, she's able to answer questions available. Is it, because I know like when you're off work, if you're sick or something, you can't do that, is that?
Required, required 42, but they volunteered.
Is that what it is, okay, I just, that just jumped out at me, and I just wanted to make sure we were not doing, that you weren't doing something, you were.
I would probably say, Margaret, and the board, most of our teachers who are out never are truly out. They're, they're out there, because these are, this is their, this is their program, so I wish I could say they, just to tell them 100%, but they don't, and they're very good, so she had.
I just didn't want us to be doing something, I didn't want her to be doing something that was gonna screw things up.
The only thing we do enforce, just the board, if the doctor has you out, or you be here on campus, we gotta have a clearance that you are okay to be on campus.
So you are asking for those days to be unpaid, until you come, seven total days. Anybody else have any other questions? Thank you very much.
Mrs. Yost, they're gonna bill bonus tonight, and you're welcome to stay, and we'll get the little one, so I, Ms. Deal, or I will email you tomorrow morning, and I can call you, so you're all welcome to stay if you want.
Okay, next item on our agenda is our building substitution utilization presentation.
So I'm just gonna start off, and then I'm gonna turn over to Ms. Deal and Ms. Shad. In June, when you approved the budget, in the budget, we had the building substitutes that we had been using in the past, where they're assigned every day to come to a building and cover classes at the, and often, time during this period, we've been doing this for, since COVID started, we were paying more through COVID funds or some grant that we received. When we went into the budget this year, those dollars are gone, we spent them, so these are all coming out of the cost, they're coming out of general fund, we might have like $3,000, but we kind of spent the last $3,000, it's all general fund dollars right now. So when we did the budget, or you approved the budget, you asked during a presentation back in June, of how are we utilizing the building substitutes? So I just wanna explain before I turn it over, the documents you have in your background. When a teacher is out and we don't have a substitute, there's a form that you have in there that the building's held that says, okay, I've got Ms. Shad, and Ms. Shad's out, Mrs. Chlor covered her class, Mrs. Chlor's name's written down under Ms. Shad's, so we know we owe Mrs. Chlor, because she missed her prep, we owe that, that process. So that form was adjusted, so when we are utilizing the building substitutes, you'll know what classes they were in. I just wanna clarify, there's, there's a variety of reasons why that might be, it could be an I E P, that we didn't get a sub for, we had a full teacher, so forth, but it gives you by building, what's turning, you see kind of like V W chicken scratch initials next to it. I review those before they get paid for business, so what I ask Ms. Deal to do is kind of give you a presentation, how are building subs being utilized at the three buildings in the total? And then what you're gonna see, Canyon will come up and talk to you about, what is our current cost that we spent? What is our projected cost, and our budgets, where we're at, and then I'll come back up at the end, so.
So as you see in the slideshow, the four building substitutes total are just two at the government long-term vacancies, one at the middle school, one at Richmond High School. We broke down the data into three different categories, coverage for a classroom teacher, we have other, which is covered for secretary, parent, professional. It could be like testing, closure, office support, things like that, and then we have another category, which is the absence of the building substitutes. And here you can kind of see the breakdown of substitutes day, and notice that there's six sections, and there's seven sections at the middle school and high school. So when you look at the numbers, you can see there's a little bit of a difference. So here's the breakdown for elementary school, and you notice at the top, it's a week of nine, three, eleven, four, there's four workdays, and the week of 11, 25, there's two workdays. So if you go through and look, blue is other, this is a sub covering other, those are the categories, secretary, parent, pro. And then if you look at, if the green is teacher, and then the yellow shows building subs absence. So you see, it's 87% covers for teachers, at elementary school, 6% other, 1.12% kind of their absence.
And that would make sense, because if you look at that, we have two long-term subs in this year, so the building sub has really been covering classes.
And that's the, I'm sorry.
Correct, for two people.
So even if you're taking the extra fee to get that off, it's still costing us because we're paying the sub.
Correct. And we're gonna get to the finance part.
So we're paying those people anyways?
Some people who are off, generally, yes, we're paying the teacher.
No, the subs.
Oh, right now, the subs, we committed, as the district committed the sub through the first. So we were covering the cost of the sub regardless of whether they were covering in class or.
Because we wanted those people in the red hands, yes, and their employees.
Correct. At the elementary, it just happened this year, why we put two there, we knew we were gonna have leads and we knew we were gonna have to cover, so they were just there assigned.
So it's not costing us any additional.
We plan on covering the.
Sometimes we have to bring the middle school down to elementary to cover because sure, there's the two, but they're taking up, so sometimes they.
We have.
Yeah, but also they're still on the pay. There's still, there's still.
When you look at the finance, you're gonna see that we plan on paying the building sub through first semester, which whether they're covering a teacher or whether they're covering it in a classroom, whether they're floating, whether they're helping pass, whatever it is, they're doing something, coming in, and they're working every day. And there's a couple, you can see as Jamie pointed out, the yellow, they're not off very often. Very few.
All right, so this is the breakdown for the middle school. You see it's fifty-one point nine percent early time is covered for teachers, forty-four point eight percent is other, and three point three percent of the time the sub is absent.
For the middle, if you go back to showing, I just want to point, the building sub, in that case, in the green, when you look at the numbers, was counted, we had a ELA vacancy at the beginning of the year until we hired the person and they started, that's in the green. So when that substitute was covering that vacancy, that's in the green, so we built that in.
Yeah, at the end, when it's all.
I was just looking at the second to the end, it was, oh, I get it.
So if you look at the end, that's fourteen slots, but Jamie explained, there's seven slots in a day. We had two days that week, so there's fourteen slots. So that gains on that, probably thirteen of the times, they were covering a teacher, one time they did something else. And you go to your point, Candace, if they were a middle school sub and they were moved to the elementary school to cover, they're counted in the green, that's charted.
We went to the high school, forty-seven point seven percent of the time was covered for teachers, fifty-seven point four was other, and one point nine was absent. This is the summary for all the buildings, sixty-six point five percent of the time is covered for teachers, thirty point one percent was other, thirty point four percent was absent. Questions on that part? Or turn over to Tammy?
So with the other, the other coverage, right?
Yep.
So are we finding that less sub secretaries are being utilized, less paraprof secretaries, that kind of, that less of that, because these people are the ones who are covering.
It's hard to find most subs in general.
Sure.
Hard to find, we rarely find a paraprof sub.
Right.
Very rarely.
So they're basically the end. Right, sure. So we're probably having less, utilizing less of that because these folks are there.
Correct.
Maybe?
If everybody's doing what should be, if I'm a paraprof in my position, specialized, is set up that I'm, when I put my absence in, it asks for a sub. If they're doing that and the sub's not, nobody's picking that job up, then the blue is helping fill that vacancy. If they're putting the absence in, and they didn't request a sub because they're planning on the paraprof, I don't know that. Because they're not using the system.
The system, the way it's supposed to.
Now, as Jamie said, we don't have a strong candidate pool for subsecretary. We don't have a strong candidate pool for paras. And oftentimes, we're covering internally and moving people.
Well, and, but the reality is, nobody does. You will look around the.
Right, right.
They're always trying to get that, so by having these people, it's a huge benefit to us.
The work is being covered.
Yes.
The work's being covered.
Yes, the work is being covered.
So this chart summarizes the cost of the four building subs that we've had. And this cost is through the pay period that federal staff had, which was November 23rd. That was the most recent invoice we had in the office. So we had, we had. For Will, Will Belli Elementary School, we had two subs, so twenty-one thousand. Richmond Middle School, one sub, started a little bit later, so that's cost a little less, eighty-seven hundred. And Richmond High School, also fewer workdays than the elementary, ninety-four hundred. For a total of thirty-nine thousand, for fourteen. And we had about thirteen weeks of school as of November 23rd, so that averages about three thousand per week.
And that's all cost for that sub. Because remember, there's a P to pay to edge the staff that goes on top of what their current, per day.
So if you compare the remainder of the year to where we are now, there's five, oh, five weeks left for semester, eighteen weeks in the second semester, for a total of twenty-three weeks. If you multiply that by the three thousand per week, we get projected cost to the end of the year of about sixty-nine thousand. How we cover.
Let me go back. So from the board's perspective, if we're looking at continuing this for second semester, a ballpark number is gonna be eighteen weeks at roughly three thousand a week, which would be fifty-four thousand dollars. For a first semester cost, the slide before, that Tammy showed you, we need to add five more weeks to get the total first semester. It's another fifty, it's another fifteen thousand to cover the total first semester, so fifteen, what is that? Fifty-four, fifty-four thousand-ish for a happy year for building subs.
And we can cover costs in two ways. One is to bring in an education, teaching staff substitute, which for the building subs, that cost is hundred and seventy-seven ninety per day. Another option is our teachers that have prep periods, buying their prep period from them, so they would cover a class during their prep period. And that would be for six hours a day, because if there's seven periods, the teacher has, one of those periods is a prep period for them, so we'd have to cover six classes. It'd be about three thirty-three dollars per day.
It's better if we have.
We do some of that and we'll get to that as well.
So we're better off if we can get a sub?
We are better financially from a financial. And just from a, from having a break in the day, it's been a long time since I've been in a classroom, so I don't, I hope that I have any expertise, current expertise, but when you're teaching six hours a day, I think you need a break, just to the bathroom, catch. But there are some teachers who have worked, and in years past, we've had teachers who worked on their prep, so they never had a break in the day. So yes, you are right, substitute is the better way to go. But then again, like I said, maybe just a challenge in getting a sub.
Excellent, getting someone who watched us work during the prep period, also finding the subs. So in total for the year, if we take all the general and subs that we've had, subteachers only, elementary, our year-to-date is at twenty-six thousand, just under twenty-seven thousand. Middle school's just under twenty-two thousand, and high school's a little over twenty thousand. So in total, we spent for gen N classroom teacher subs, sixty-eight thousand, eight twenty-three. We budgeted a total of hundred and five thousand and have remaining available funds of thirty-six thousand, one sub.
So the number on the year-to-date, you gotta remember this, that that includes the building sub in that number, but it also includes if Billy's doing a curriculum, pulling subs out, or we have a, is this where the 504 and special ed, if their IPs are done?
That would be in the special ed.
Right, forgot. This could also be, as a teacher, we have two absences, and we actually got someone who picked up a job, and it's coming out of here, so one might be absent and one we're using the building sub.
Yes, there were a number of days where we did not have, you know, one person in the middle school did not cover the absence. Then we've also paid teachers to work during the prep period. Elementary time teaching, very little, three hundred and eighty-five dollars we've spent to date. Middle school time teaching, two thousand, one oh nine, and high school's three hundred and thirty-three. So of our budget of thirty-two thousand, five sixty, we only spent about twenty-eight hundred dollars, so we have about twenty-nine thousand available.
So the backup documents that you have, why you see so many blanks? Because we don't have, we're not having a lot of teachers teaching on their prep. So that's why I provided you those documents, so they, it has happened, no, we give off. But not to the level that it has been previous years.
And this, the substitute cost is through November 23rd, which was the federal staff pay period that day. This is through November 25th, that's one, one we're schooling, yeah. And when you combine them, our total contracted sub cost is sixty-eight thousand, our time teaching, provided by ourselves, working, our teachers working their prep periods, twenty-eight hundred, our combined total to date is seventy-one thousand, six seventy-one. Our budget available in total is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five sixty, which leaves us about sixty-six thousand available for covering subs.
So the question that's posed to the board, because our next meeting is organizationally, is January thirteenth. And the next board meeting, do we have any action, is January twenty-seventh, which is the start of the second semester? So the question the board, the conversation to have is, do we want to continue having building substitutes in the buildings for second semester? We are going to be losing one of our building substitutes who is starting her student teaching second semester. The plan is that that substitute is gonna move in, where she's doing her student teaching is gonna turn into a long-term position because we have a teacher who's expecting. So she'll be in the classroom, and then she'll just finish the year in that same classroom. So with students, it's a perfect math because of the continuity. So that would leave then three building substitutes for us. And if our cost for the building subs was about thirty-nine thousand at this point to date for four, kind of get a proportion of about ten thousand, we could take off of that if we were having four building subs. Yeah, when we look at the next slide, we're looking at, if we want to continue for four, it's gonna be sixty-nine thousand. So eighteen of those weeks, if one is not available, it's gonna reduce that cost down because we don't have three building subs and we have to shift where they're working at. When you look at what Tammy shared, it's the total cost. We do have dollars in the account in general fund, the sixty-five thousand shifting between the two ways we pay for miss prep, teaching, the covering. The roll of the dice is if we have the May Friday flu, that is a tradition pattern in every district in Lehigh County. We have a lot of absences on Friday. We have things that come up, we don't have enough interim subs to cover those, so they would be charged in the account that we're kind of taking the money from and pay for the building subs. I'll open it for discussion or thoughts, and then we can go from there. If you have any other questions for me or Jamie or Tammy?
The elementary, obviously, one of them is coming back shortly. The other one that's out, when are they?
I believe they're out through mid-February. So we would keep that building sub in that position because we have to cover the class through that time that teacher comes back.
And then we would have potentially two building subs?
We would have two, after January, we have one available, and then in February, if we have the two, which we could, we could shift between buildings and.
Since we're losing one.
Correct.
I assume we keep it, I think it's, I think available.
Well, we've heard the teachers speak on this issue a couple of times, and it shows because they're not having to teach on their prep, which I think they appreciate. I mean, it appears that we have the budget for it, so I think I would also be for it.
Yeah, I mean, these are people that are dedicated to us every single day.
I would just add too, yes, the dollar is there. We're rolling the dice, because there's days where there's three or four absences.
I get, I get that, yeah.
But those are all the unknowns. As of this today, all foreseen leaves, we have someone to come or ready to take that absence. If someone came into our house and said, I haven't been showing up, I'm doing art, probably not possible, but.
I also feel like it's an added benefit that these students are seeing the same subs regularly.
There is no doubt that having these individuals in the building not only helps in the building, but some of the other things they're doing helps them build relationships with students.
Correct.
I would probably argue most students not see these individuals as a sub. They're just one of the back people in the building.
Right, right.
And you can see on the backup documentation, there were days that, you know, the high school sub went over to the elementary school, it was sent to the elementary school, and the middle school sub got sent to the high school or whatever. So between the three buildings, if it's available, we move them around. This summer or this fall is a little tighter because they have, as available, we have one position.
And you also have the substitutes that are very, then obviously, familiar with our students and our building and our staff and how we work and things like that as well, so. I'm in favor of this, in this for the second semester.
Yeah, it's a good. But my question is, did we, did we vote to, so is it gonna have to be something that we vote, or is it just direction?
It was, in the June budget, it was a direction we were gonna go. It was not official.
As part of the budget.
As part of the budget, and you had directed me to come back in December, show you how it had been used to make a decision for January.
So it's just a direction?
Correct, correct. I just, my only statement I want everybody, and I know you know this, but it is a roll of dice, and at the end of the year, we could be over budget, over a hundred and thirty-seven thousand more than full budget. So is it a direction to maintain four, or is it a direction to maintain three, knowing we're losing one through the student teaching long-term position?
I, well, we currently have four.
We have four, and the direction the board, I guess, kind of gave it was definitely three, one, any children. But knowing at the time we were doing the budget, we had a lot of excitement. There's a maternity leave, people's families growing, so we kept four, knowing we were gonna have to fill it anyway.
Well, I think that we still need to keep the four because we are gonna, we already know that we're gonna be losing one, not, we're already gonna be losing.
She's shifting or doing.
Yeah, there you go, perfect, that's a way better way to say it.
So we'd have, if you want, or we'd have to hire a fourth one.
I know.
Or if you want to go down to one per building, knowing kind of the fourth one, we've already got planned for the long term. It's just that person's gonna be in the classroom with the kids already, and the kids already know that person. It would make sense.
But when you go back to the utilization charts, I mean, they were very, four of them were utilized. I mean, there's not a whole lot of.
This was utilized because we had two leads. They're gonna, we need someone regarding. This, it's about fifty percent of the time, so two-thirds of the time, all four of them were in a classroom for teachers.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, when I say, I don't mean that they weren't doing anything, I just meant in a classroom, you know, as a teacher.
Yeah, and I do want to make sure, and I hope I walk away, that blue is not bad. They're doing something positive for this person. It's just defining, we need someone in the green because we gotta cover classes of kids.
Right.
Whereas the others that we've been a lot more flexible with.
Others until long term, that the one is taking over, is there any other projected situation that are?
No, but anything could come up from, someone has a medical, someone over the doctor, and they said, you need, you need to be out for six weeks yet, so those things come up all the time. But as of today, we only know one for the spring, and it just worked out to do the student teaching right into the long term.
I just wanted to add something real quick, just because we're referencing these breakdowns real quick, I wanted to add, the elementary school breakdown is the only one that adds up to ninety nine point nine percent while the others add up to a hundred percent. Does that, does that matter?
It's a decimal.
I, I, okay, I just wanted to check out, that's an issue or...
Down to one, but...
Okay, I just couldn't help but notice anyways.
I'll send you the chart that I calculated.
Just, I was silly, I thought I...
I think there's just a difference, is at the elementary, as Jamie said, they have six blocks. So for every sub, every day we're counting six blocks, so every day is twelve blocks.
Yeah.
So twelve times five days a week, you're going to see sixty as the total number. Where a high school, middle school, they have seven blocks.
Yeah.
One sub, seven, ten subs, thirty five, didn't give a difference. But the total comes to be the same.
I guess I don't have the problem just leaving it at three because the reality was, our conversation was, we wanted one in each building. The fourth came about because of what was going to happen. So I don't have the problem of leaving it with the three. And then, you know, I guess if you get to a point at somewhere where you might need to hire somebody, but I believe in at the three, because when we talk about it for next year, we may talk, we want four, as opposed to...
I could be next June when we're doing the budget, could be telling you, I know of five leads that's second. I mean, that's, that is, that's the good thing with the younger staffs, is they're all in their families, hopefully they choose certain schools as the school of choice to educate their child. But that is part of the challenge today, district head of the younger staff, because that's a difficult task.
Have you had any conversations, I guess, with your administration or your teachers, I guess, like, in regards to this, like, what's your recommendation, I guess, after having those conversations?
I do not know of one administrator, or anything wrong, who does not want their building subs.
Right, but I'm saying in regard, because I am a hundred percent on board for three, and I, I actually think that we should even hire a fourth, I guess, from what I just saw. So that's why I'm asking, you know, what, what are your, what are they telling you? What are you hearing? What's your recommendation?
I, I didn't ask them, do you want four or three? I asked them in general, not necessarily as a club group, but they've all said, we want our building subs.
Our building subs.
And like I said, it's, they don't want it deceiving of anybody, if it comes that way, just because elementary's at ninety percent, and for the other high schools at forty percent, they aren't, they're doing valuable thing. There's a lot, their building is unique. Elementary, we had two, if Andrew's building, she should come in the spring and two vacancies planned, she's going to be at ninety percent this year because we're quick, we're covering, so...
And the reality is that could happen just more. Yeah, I think so, right, it could flip around, that's just, that's the beauty of having this.
So to answer your question, I think the administrative team, and I would probably say that the teachers and new leadership would want to keep all four. My recommendation to you is to keep, go back to what you originally charged them, and put three in there, and we use our fourth one as what we know we already have planned for. So we have one in every building.
So I guess, what I'm...
I am concerned on budget.
On budget, okay, fair enough.
From the perspective of, kind of the big picture, we used to have quite a bit of Title I that paid for teachers and parents. Our Title I budget only covered teacher. So all those parents, we moved to thirty one A. Stuff that we paid on thirty one A is starting to do in them. We have right now in our thirty one A, now to parent age, probably two years. Our current allocation, what we have carryover, to keep existing program. At the end of next year, if we don't have increases, we're going to take that out of the general fund. All the, we were very creative on all those grants. So when I look at that aspect, and I look at the state giving us this one-time money and no per pupil increase, our costs are structured there. We've got the one-time money, we hold it now. We did get the reduction in the retirement. There's the discrepancy, I wanted to date that starting, and how much of that that we're actually going to do that, which is why I ask, kind of roll the dice this year with, do I believe at the end of the year, we're going to have a balanced budget of being professors equal, yeah, I think we're going to be pretty close.
So my only concern is that we have had four this whole time, and that seems to have worked out well.
I argue that we really only have two. Because two of them have been locked in, I don't really think, locked into a position, haven't been able to fill, we've had absences and subs.
So it's a great thing that we have them available.
You're, you're absolutely right. It's one less burden that's stress. It's one less burden and stress that we have to deal with because we know we have good, reliable people who are filling these big positions.
Right.
And they have gone from a high school, twelfth grade classroom, all the way down to a, probably kindergarten classroom, literally a day or two from it.
That's really tough, yeah.
I would think like that they are...
I mean, yeah, I, I am definitely on board for the three, for sure. I mean, I, I would even argue the four, but I mean, I would accept the three.
What direction for the board?
That's my direction.
I'm, I'm agree with it, Ray, because I think the fourth is technically filling the role that we were allocating at the beginning of the year, right? I mean, that, that's a possibility that that person comes into, that we kind of projected and more, totally agree. And then the other two are maybe free up, still around that same time.
One will be free up in, in January, and then the others in February.
Okay, so our direction is maintain three? Okay.
With the four that we planned for for their...
Correct, yes, correct.
Student teaching into the...
Into the position.
So the one that's in the student teaching, that they only paid after the that, when they're in the role, we're paying that for...
Correct, correct. For the longer, though, they pay out of the sub. And, and often, kind of, I don't know, on this student teaching, it's hard to get a look, if they sometimes cover for their mentor, for their teacher who's absent, they get paid for that day if they're covering for their teacher. I don't know if they get, I don't think they can cover other teachers because they've got to be in that classroom so many hours, so, or with the person, if you could work out just... But if they do cover their teacher, they would get paid as you would pay a teacher. Or subs.
Okay, next item on our agenda is our full stu, our fall student staff and parent perception survey results.
So I'll start this, and then I'll turn it over to Billy. This is, uh, there's a lot of slides that we could have given you, we just kind of summarized it. In your backup, you have what we've given all of our student, uh, school improvement teams, which is the fall of twenty three, the spring of twenty four, and the fall of twenty four, kind of side by side, we talked. So from that angle, this is something we started a couple of years ago. We've surveyed parents as a district, we've collectively built this, we added some pieces this year, and you'll see the results of the, other kids want to, parents and students and staff want to start before Labor Day, but they thought about starting school later in the day, as well as half-days in P L C, et cetera. So Billy, if you come up and talk to you about what we kind of noticed, really seeing between, compared to the fall perception survey.
Good, thank you. Okay, so again, like Mr. Walmsley said, this is really just kind of a very high lens overview of just in analyzing the survey results from that initial fall of twenty three to this year's fall of twenty four results. You know, what parents could we see, what, what movement could we see? So among the three groups that were surveyed, so we had the students, the staff, and the parent guardian group, we saw the most notable increase in scores overall in the parent guardian survey. And these six areas were the ones that kind of stood out as some of the more exceptional growth in those areas. So they, I feel like my child's educational goals are supported group by quite a bit. My child's school promotes academic success for all students. My child's teachers work hard to make sure students do well in the country. Student expectations are clearly communicated and posted. Students treat each other fairly regardless of race, ethnicity, or culture, and as a parent, I frequently attend school activities. So this is just a snapshot of the responses for those six that we just mentioned from this year's results. So again, just for time and space, and they, it's kind of, they're hard to see anyway, I know you were going to have them in front of you, so... But thinking about it, the green and the blue on the top of each is strongly agree or agree. So if you were to take any of those and kind of put them side by side, I mean, you can really see where that green and blue bar combined would be, you know, way over to that eighty, ninety, close to a hundred percent approval or agreement within those six categories. So again, those were really highly rated categories across the board for the parents. As far as the student results, the two areas that the biggest growth could be seen was from the students answering if they feel connected to at least one adult, and that was just a simple yes or no question. And then the second area of growth was feeling that my feedback is valued by teachers and administrators. And again, kind of looking at that, you can see the difference between students saying how many in the fall of twenty twenty three felt that they had that connection to an adult, and then a little bit of growth there into this year. And again, we've talked several times about silent mentoring and really focusing on that, so we're glad to see that the results are actually indicating that that is working. And then the second category, I feel my feedback is valued by my teachers and administrators. So again, if we were to combine with blue and green, we see some increase there. Neutral still too, but certainly not very much on that bottom disagree or strongly disagree category. And for staff results, the areas that indicated the most growth were that my building or department frequently and positively recognizes students for meet expectations, and instructional material use are up to date and in good condition. You'll see the graph from last year to this year, that, just that little bit of movement. And also along with the staff results, there were a couple of areas that went down just a little bit, nothing drastically, but still certainly something to note when we see that occur. So holding high standards for achievement and promoting success for all students were two areas that went down just slightly. And so I've indicated what our next steps are regarding areas that may have gone down, but also the areas that are showing improvement. So as Mr. Walmsley indicated, all of the school and district improvement teams have received copies of the result, both at the district level and they're rolling down for just their school level results. And there's been several meetings in the last month or so where they've set down as teams to analyze those results. They're creating plans to address any areas of decline, and then concentrating on the ongoing success areas and what we can continue to do to amp those up. So I've already started to see some ideas coming out, and they're excited to implement some new things and then see if we can continue moving in that positive direction. I did not, in our summary, get into those pieces as far as those last questions about the school year start and end times, but I think that's something we'll come back with.
So as, as Billy said, we use this data to kind of look at what, this perception, if the day this is taken, what kind of people are feeling, you know, if for some reason they had a great meeting with Mrs. Nagier, or Mrs. Naglin, excuse me, and then all of a sudden they got this link to fill out the survey, you know, people's tendency are to be more positive. If for some reason, a parent, you know, was this, but he wasn't happy with my decision, sometimes people's tendencies. So you take those anomalies on the, on the ends and kind of, to look at that. But overall, I think we should be very proud as an organization, from our students, our staff, and our parents. When you look at them all side by side, it's, there's not one that is, well, we got to, we got to do some work on this group, and now, as Billy said, we got work to do, and we're going to keep doing it, but we should be very proud of looking at. I would most encourage with a connection to an adult, because it's been my passion here, that every student has someone, whether it's a custodian, whether it's a teacher, whether it's someone, that they can accomplish, now that they have a situation, they can go to, or making end roads in that. So there are a lot of good things going on. Any questions on the survey?
Real quick, I agree with what Billy has said, that's something we've been working on. We have heard from our staff or whatever about building that relationship piece, so that's really, as you said, we're, we're, there is...
And my hope is things like the, the B WAP and the summit that they're done and talking about how students can empower themselves, how students can continue growing this, especially students feeling empowered to be part of something. Your question, I don't know who asked it, about how do kids know what to do, I mean, that's, that's been a question when my daughter was here, of, if I was, we're on social media, we weren't on TikTok or Facebook, wherever I got posted to, how do you know what's going on? And if that's the vehicle we're trying to get all kids have access to so that they can be part of the group. There's no human that does not want to be part of something, especially something good.
And Brian, do we kind of do more of these annually, or...
Uh, there's sort of some conversation. Mentally, we'll do it each year because we like to see a kind of pre and post of the year. We'll look at the questions, sometimes we'll tweet the questions or add-ons of questions, the ones that were asked at the end, we're really talking about because we're getting ready to go into negotiations with the teachers. You see about calendar, you see about the start time, research will tell you, high school's kids need to start later, their brains aren't functioning at, at that time. Little kids should be starting earlier. If you flip it, and often, kind of, their schedules are related to sports. That is one thing that we, we may disagree with, it's a reality we live, and we've got to work around and figure it out. But what has helped us is some of the restructuring, like our calendar, looking at, see if we can find, build in more professional development days, and we'll get half-days. So that information from parents is very helpful in planning for that, and that will come to you as we start the motion. There were conversations about how we break this down by building. We tried it, and I said it was trying, it's anonymous, so I'm trying not to be able to track it to a person, but the buildings have said it's very beneficial if I know, like that student data connecting to adult, we can say, yeah, it's pretty good, but if one building was really good, and one building wasn't as good, it would help that building a little better. So if Billy was able to kind of, at least pull it down by grade levels based on what people pick, so we'll look at that, see if there's a way so we can, and it might be targeted, we might want to stay out of the collective group, let's just focus on a couple of questions and see how people are thinking of that.
I think it's also great, I really think it's positive, it's just positive that the number of people who participated in it had a risk. Right, which also, I think, says, oh, this gives me an opportunity to voice my opinion, but also someone's listening to you. Right, you wouldn't participate in something if you didn't think people were actually listening to you, and that just in and of itself is a good sign, right, that the participation level is...
A lot of the middle school and high schools' building levels were, they were talking about, that they were calling the strategies, how they can engage kids more apparent, and it's positive conversation based on this data.
So, did I present you correctly, that it's your intention then to do it two times a year?
We'll do one in the spring again, like we did last year, so we have a fall, and kind of thing like a barrel of time, the spring survey. We'll look at the questions, because we might need to tweet some questions or add it. I'm always questioning how many questions, because sometimes we lose any interest.
I was going to say, some people get like survey fatigue, I know how I do with my work.
So I don't want to overdo it, but from, because we used to, each building kind of did their own thing. And so when we started this last year, we came together, said, what are we, what are we all asking? We just not put it out together, and it also helps, helps us work smarter in how we do things.
Maybe not during the week of Halloween. It was during, it was during Halloween, there was so much going on.
Oh, no, no.
But I don't, I don't consider that. Okay, so next item on our agenda is our finalization of our twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two planning enrollment in the future.
So I'm here to try to talk to you, we did this a couple of weeks ago, we talked about the finalization, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that. And in August, I presented the enrollment projections that we did, so I want to kind of focus on that one. But really, my, my goal here is to look at what we have an opportunity for in the future. I'm going to be very broad in the conversation because part of it, we're going to see in this presentation, is the ability to, to begin having parent and staff meetings, to be gathering more input on what a potential future bond could look like. From a broad perspective, I can tell you the immediate needs we're going to see, as well as when you look at the enrollment, what we're going to immediately need, which are some big ticket items within that, that scope. So a couple of weeks ago, Tammy shared this, this proposal with you, this is how we spent our thirty nine million dollar budget from, it was voter approved in nineteen. We issued two series, one in twenty, one in twenty-two. The twenty-two was about eight hundred thousand, the majority of it was done in twenty. And then you look at this, this entire thing at the time... the time, November eleventh meeting, we had about eighty-seven thousand dollars left, the unspent bond value. And we accomplished a lot more. Everything was in the, within the realm of what the voters approved, but a lot more scope because we had a lot of things come in under budget. The biggest thing we were able to do was add in area issue that wasn't part of the original budget, which was a huge cost. This is just a different way of showing it. All of our, our money went to building improvements, our motivations additions, et cetera, furnishings, equipment. I think we referenced on the eleventh, we take a building and shake it, all the stuff that falls out, desks, chairs, furniture, furniture, computers, et cetera. And then we're up to that eighty-seven. Tonight, the stuff in green is before you tonight to approve, so we'll be able to use the remaining eighty-seven thousand dollars to replace the cafeteria entrance doors, which are by the dumpsters going from the outside to the elementary school to the cafeteria. Replace the exterior doors to the cafeteria, gym that go out to the playground area. And then replace the two exterior boys and girl locker room doors. Those, the elementary ones, I believe, are like a greenish color to drive by, and the high school ones are the blue ones on the side of the building. So those came in a lot cheaper, a lot, still a big chunk of money, but less than what we anticipated.
And then those jobs have been completed?
This is what, what the greens would be, all the other ones that are listed will be completed. Yeah, still on the list would be looking at library furniture for the high school and the middle, the elementary school, which is very purchased at the elementary school, middle school, the gym bleachers at the high school. We always have additional buses, though our plan right now is we've been replacing buses. And on a side note, we have two extra bus drivers that are on staff right now. We are looking at putting one of them on a route, creating a new route after the first year, bringing that bus kinds of their riding. It's been extremely beneficial, I'm going to go off on a tangent, having the extra ones because we've been able to do field trips and after-school activities, and parents may have to drive as much. And when the bus drivers are out, we can have coverage. So we're looking at that possibility.
So then, those last three things, that's going to complete and bring us to zero?
We will be spent the bond dollars, and we'll spend eighty-seven thousand, and the remain will come out of the non-bond capital projects account that we have set aside, paid for that. And then we can look at some of these other items, potentially using that bond for potential future bonds. All right, so part of, you know, we sold the last bond, and rightfully so to the community, is we had a lot of needs. If you remember, we tagged everything with an orange sticker, we sprayed it in orange squares on the parking lot, because there was a lot. And when you drive around our campus now, it is completely different. It's probably one of those, probably biased, but one of those beautiful campuses from the school system that are around. It is really nice. So looking at, you said, why would we talk about a future bond? We're looking at where we are enrollment-wise and our current utilization. So it's a different take on any future conversation about bonds. What I'm talking about is enrollment. I'm going to go into a little more depth than what I did in August, so you have an understanding. Every district does some type of enrollment projections. We contracted with Michigan Alliance for Student Opportunities back last year, and they provided, and provided this information to the board on August four. So everything to date that I've shared has publicly been shared. If you were at a board meeting or watched our board meeting, you've seen this upgrade. This is nothing new. So when you look at that, we look at our current and past enrollment. And so when you go back from nineteen, or eighteen, nineteen to the twenty-three, twenty-four year, you can see in eighteen, nineteen, we were at fourteen, ninety. From the twenty-three, twenty-four, we're at sixteen, twenty-six. So when you look at grade levels, you can see kindergarten, pre-K is going to have a six percent increase over time, kindergarten three, and so forth. When you look at grade bands, all of them with the exception of seventh grade, over time, you'll get a start to defend it, has been an increase. You've got more kids coming here. This is just another way of showing it. Looking at the total enrollment visually, you can see a linear line of path around like on the turn. Remember the grade turn linear slope. The slope, basically, your slope is there, you're running up your slope. Good job saying same. When you look at enrollment projection, there are five ways that this company looks at enrollment. Nothing is perfect. We used to be able to take birth rates and death rates, you know, that kind of orbit. But we look at how many babies were born, what was the death rate in the area, because most kids went to your neighborhood school. When school of choice came in, they kind of threw a wrench in how we count it, because you don't know when parents are picking up and leaving and going. We get a lot of parents who we, we might be their tenth school they've gone to, because they have traveled to many schools. And if you're an administrator or work at a school, so you kind of know, or a talker or a teacher. We have some families that make their choice. And one of the things that I shared with you before is, we have made significant progress in retaining our families that live in Richmond. And we actually have increased the percentage of students that live in our district who choose to go to Richmond Community Schools, when the county and tri-county average is actually decreasing. More districts are losing kids rather than retaining their population. That's a good problem to have. But when you look at method one, and it looks at, now just kind of read it, kindergarten, pre-K, moment, is a simple exponential smooth growth. Here's look at the past five years, kind of average it out and go forward. This particular model shows over the next five years, we should expect a thirteen percent increase. And that number for twenty-four, twenty-five, I don't know, this was done last year, so it didn't have this year's number, because it's pretty close. But what we end up with, a little higher than what we end up with, it's pretty close. When you look at here, this is again, I've been giving a lot here, but if you look at the end and look at that, the purple column on the far right, over time, going from eighteen, nineteen, where we had eighty-one, thirty, or eighty-one, hundred and three kindergarten, to what they project in eighteen, or twenty-eight, twenty-nine, near to one twenty-seven, if you look at over time, you can see the growth. Okay? We have new subdivisions coming in. Older families are moving out of their houses. Again, I don't mean to sound morbid, but as people pass, people buy houses, it's just the social economics of our society. And so in this area, people are moving to the northern McComb County area.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
So have you had the opportunity, I'm sure that you have, to look at the, I know that the whole number is pretty close to what we have. So obviously, this company did a great job in their projection. But have you had the opportunity to look, like, per class? Is it pretty close? Are they pretty?
I have, but I, off the top of my head, I can, I can, I can ask you a follow-up with you.
Yeah.
I kind of look at the bottom line number.
Right.
From the perspective of, that's what our FT is, and that's what we get funding on, the way the current structure is. So we may be up in kindergarten and down in first grade, but when I look at that bottom number, I need that to be overall, because we would adjust. But-
I'm only curious, I'm just curious, so if you could.
Absolutely. And again, the way we do is, we send the actual numbers to the company, they put it to their different models, and they're going to give us five different models here. And as a district, we can pick which one we want to use to use projections. We've typically gone just moving kids up a grade level and assuming the same kindergarten and see what that number is. And it generally has been an increase or at least flat. And then if we do have an increase, it's a, it's a plus to the budget. This is method one. Method two, again, we always start with our kindergarten numbers, looks at a five-year moving average, so it takes the five years, you know, from eighteen, nineteen to twenty-three, twenty-four, gives an average, and goes from nineteen, twenty, to twenty-four. It always has a five-year average that you're moving up. In this model, it would show for the next five years that we would have a ten percent growth. So what does that look like? In twenty-three, twenty-four, we're at sixteen, twenty-six. We would go to seventeen, eighty-nine. That is a hundred and sixty-three students in five years. Think about that, a hundred and sixty-plus students in five years. So as we look at these, this is the thing, these are the things I should say, that we need to begin planning for the future. If we're truly fiscally responsible, looking for our best interest, like, these are the things that we look at. Again, it looks at grade bands, looking at percentages, net gains, and so forth. Statistically, in McComb County, the population is declining. Statistically, in the U.S., population is not, people aren't having as many babies anymore, or they're having it later in life, and so, and so forth. So northern McComb schools are having, this past October student count of the twenty-one district, I believe there's only five that showed an increase, and all the other sixteen show decreases in enrollment. Richard is one of those five that is showing increasing enrollment. The more good things we do, the more positive passages we get out, the more progress we do for kids, the more we're going to grow. Again, looking at this projection over five years, you can see what they're projecting in growth. When you look at model three, it's a smoothing grade span to grade span. Again, this is a thirteen percent growth. Looking over, again, a lot of these are, it's a lot of information on some other than any, you don't digest it, but just kind of looking at the percentages over year over year. But then when you look at it again, this method is also showing. So I should give you three different ways to calculate this, and all three ways so far are saying, you need to expect growth. You're gonna have to be growth, or you should expect that. Method four, this is again, showing a ten percent growth. When you look at the trend, again, it's showing growth. Method five is just the averaging of all four methods. So if one had ten, one had five, one had fifteen, one had ten, they'll average a ten percent, if I did it correctly. But this one's showing a twelve percent. On an average of all the other methods, you should expect a twelve percent gain. This shows the comparison of the different methods and so forth. Again, it's all showing increase. They never tell you when you, when you go to super tennis fields, you know, super tennis fields, it's all on the job training. But they never tell you to go too far out because economy affects things, housing market affects things, anything can affect it. So, but they do. Given these methods, if you were to project that out ten years, last year's thirty-three, thirty-four, which if you were like our second graders, first graders at the time, when we graduate, when I got here, maybe third, sixth, thirty-seven, it's like, last second grade. Over the ten years, twenty-six percent. Think of that number. One out of every, we have four kids, we're gaining another kid for every four kids in this method. And method two is sixteen percent. Method three is twenty-six percent. Method four is a sixteen percent. And you got the five, which is the average of all of them, is basically a twenty-one percent increase over the next ten years. Think about that, from fourteen, ninety, all the way to almost two thousand students district wide. So one of the logical questions someone might ask is, do we have the capacity to house all of these kids? So let's look at future bond consideration, because I'm going to tell you, we don't currently have capacity in our current structure. There is not enough physical space to house that many increases without doing something in the near future. But we have been blessed to have four, in the least, the last three bonds of our community supporting us, seven, two thousand and seven, two thousand and thirteen, and two thousand and nineteen. Two thousand and nineteen was the biggest renovation that we did. My most proud aspect from this community, we had to do it one time. And we did it one or more in two thousand and thirteen, passing. But we did it one time, because I think it was a community effort. There was something for everybody. I don't foresee any future bond facility being that inclusive, because the need for space is going to be for everybody, and how we utilize that space. But there's some big ticket dollars that we would have to look at. We have an opportunity on November fourth of two thousand and twenty-five, to go to the community and say, will you continue paying the current bond rate you're paying? No increase, and generate fifty million dollars at, at right now. Why that is important is because passing any millage where you're asking people to pay more is very challenging, especially in economics where people's finances may be tighter than in the past. We don't know what it's going to be like in eleven months from now. So in, the reason why this occurs, in July of twenty-six, we are expecting a millage rate drop. We're starting to pay off our bonds and so forth, but we don't need to, to collect as much millage in July of twenty-six. This bond will start July of twenty-six, so we're asking people, what you're currently paying, if you'll agree to keep paying it, we're going to keep loving it, and not have that drop off, and it can generate fifty million dollars. So you might say, wow, the last bond you asked for thirty-eight million, and we did a lot. What can you do with fifty? One of the things we do need to keep in mind is, pricing in nineteen is very different than pricing in twenty, twenty-four. The cost of gymnasiums, buildings that we did in nineteen is probably at least twenty-five percent more now than what that's, and I might be underestimating that. So here's what I've done so far on behalf of board to get to this presentation. But we had a great construction company, Ock, and they have been our, side by side, our guide in terms of, make sure our contracts are doing exactly what the bids are. I honestly couldn't say that when I started here in thirteen, we had a little hiccup and bumps in the road with the concrete. But we got them all fixed, and we got everything moving, which is good. And French's associates, they know our building, they know the architects, they know the ins and outs of our building. They know what to expect from our capacity in terms of this roof, you got probably ten more years, and after that, you're going to be replacing. So we have met and began talking about that. I have met with each individual building administrative team and department, what are some of your needs in a very high level focus? I also re-met with Ock to say, okay, now this is what we're thinking. It's a big ticket item, but we need to address the enrollment and begin costing that stuff out. Future is a meeting to have with Ock. In fact, I have one actually scheduled on Wednesday with them, to kind of update what we've done to this date. But what's missing in this process is parent knowledge of this process, parent information, staff knowledge, community knowledge, and so forth, and I share with you what my plan is. Let's talk about facilities. I can talk about those numbers of a hundred and sixty kids who are up to twenty-five percent if you look at a ten-year projection. This is Lee Elementary School. There are currently three rooms in Lee that you could classify as not being used for instructional areas. And in that, I would say, I wouldn't necessarily classify it. Room three oh one is the literacy library. If you walk into that room, you see bookshelves of leveled books that many of our teachers use for guided reading instruction. They have to be somewhere. It is a classroom, it's set up to be a classroom, we can easily move those books out and create a classroom. Room three oh six, you've had the opportunity to see, that's our center room, and that is used a lot in the day for various students. It could be a classroom. I say, being a classroom, putting twenty, twenty-five kids in that classroom and having another teacher. But that's a huge philosophy, you'd have to relocate that somewhere, find a spot for, because it is really essential for many of our kids. Room four oh five, I call it a meeting room. We used to have some speaking language in there, they shuffle some staff, but we've had staff meeting places. One of the things that Lee does not have is a place other than the media center for staff to get together and meet, and do grade level meetings and so forth. The conference room isn't meant for that type of meeting, if I wanted to do, you know, second and third grade together. There's no physical space other than the media center or the cafeteria for them to use. So they typically have, you know, the parapros, the special parapros, out of the record, say, we're all in that room learning various strategies and techniques from an IFC consultant. So Lee technically has three classrooms. When we look at the middle school room, I'm going to do, I'm going to kind of do a connection to the Christmas holiday coming up, when Mary and Joseph came to the inn. There's no room in the inn. I don't mean that in disrespect, but there is no room. Every single classroom in the middle school is being utilized. In fact, even the stage is being utilized for part of the classroom. And when we look at growth, and we look at enrollment, we look at cafeteria space and what feeding space, we're starting to get capacity. So middle school is probably the biggest need for some type of expansion to accommodate for future growth. We have now hit five classrooms of our grade level K five. We've had the conversation, we probably could have hit six, we decided to parapros because of the, but we're about to be planning for six first grade classrooms next year. As those numbers grow, they're coming to the middle school, there's nowhere to put them other than raised class sizes. And one thing that I'm very proud of, and this board should be, is we have been steadfast in keeping our class sizes low when we look at compared other districts. High school, there's a couple of rooms left. We have room two oh six, which is a meeting room, which used to be the criminal justice room, when we had the teacher there. when we had the teacher there, that's where they were housed part of the day, which was the whole day. 208 is a robotics meeting room, could that be a classroom? It may be, yes. And then 408, which is current backpack blessings from the community, that's where they house the food, that is essential for many of our families, who get meals on the weekends and over the summer. I would hate to lose that space in that program. There's a lot of community volunteers that come in. Now, when I said there's no classroom space, the next step, if we didn't have space, would be having teachers go in on the preps and have classrooms. With teachers who have preps, it wouldn't be, it would be in your classroom. You'd have to go somewhere else in the building to have that prep, and we could put classrooms on the preps. The challenge with that is there's never an ownership of the class. Teachers don't make the room theirs of all the visual effects and so forth, because they're just uploading, teaching, we do a classroom. It can be done, and if we're short space, that would be one thing we'd have to look at. So let's talk about big ticket projected projects. If we were to go for a bond, and tonight I'm going to ask you to at least consider, approve your resolution for me to begin having the conversation with community members, staff, students, everybody about considering going for the bond. These are some of the things that I would consider that we would need to look at. In the middle school, it hasn't, we're creating a brand new wing on the middle school. This would be where the current JV, the old JV softball field. This board several years ago made the decision, let's be strategic and think for the future, and so we moved that diamond over, knowing at some point we're going to have to expand the building, and that would be the biggest step. This rendering, again, there's no final renderings out there, I want to make sure the camera here is out of public, there is no drawing, nothing has been finalized, these are concepts and prices that we're looking at. This would basically create a fourth and fifth grade wing. And the concept that I would be looking at and exploring with the staff, and this is part of the conversation with the middle school administrative team, was they kind of are their own entity. You see that large box, that would be a gymnasium, that's primarily for fourth and fifth grade, as well as after school and extracurricular activity. Currently, the middle school gym is split, because it currently comes down, and most of the time, there are two gym classes in that gymnasium at all, all day long. You look at the number. That larger area, we'd look at some type of music room. Currently, one of our music rooms is on the stage in the cafeteria for part of the day. They don't have a music room or design, so that would be conceptual, if we look at it. But you see classrooms, you see offices to put speech and language, social workers spread them out in the building. The darker purple at the top would be reconfiguring the fourth grade, currently they have cubbies in those classrooms, so we would make them to be a multi-purpose classroom, taking up cubbies out, maybe we open the cubbies to the other side. But the concept of the middle school is a large addition. It's desperately needed, we have no room at the middle school. In all of the buildings, none of the bathrooms have been renovated in years. High school, you go down to the boys' room here, the girls' room, it's probably most of the original fixtures from 1950. Over time, when you have hundreds of kids using your bathrooms over the course of a day or a year, things break, things need to be done. So there is no design for bathrooms, and I want to make sure that's clear, there's no design for anything other than conception. What the architects do is they take a square footage, and the mark will say, if you put 1,000 square feet, you can budget for about X number of dollars per square feet. So when I show you all of these, these are, all are falling within that $50 million scope from a budget perspective, the details have to be coming in the drawings. The next building that's needed, again, if you have any questions, feel free to ask, would be the high school. We only have a couple of rooms, and we're looking at expanding programs and so forth. So if you look at on the high school, one of the things that I would be looking at or asking to consider in the board, we're doing an extension or a classroom addition off the current science wing. Science wing was put in in 2013, expanding a building structure. You see some pink areas, bathroom renovations, they're in desperate need at the high school, there is no place other than room 206 with the staff to meet and have meetings. We're shifting around all the time. We have a couple of areas in that, that pink area that's vertically, which is to the left of the cafeteria. If you've been in the high school, we could run three lunch periods, you could run an A, B, and a C. The problem with the middle one, the middle lunch period is, I start at 4:00 hour, 5:00 hour, I go to lunch, and then I come back. There's a lot of interruption in the structure and so forth, which is even good. But if you go there on any given day, we're feeding 250 kids each lunch period, there's not a lot of room left in that lunch period. So one of the concepts would be that pink area to the left, we could blow that out, not literally, but kind of blow the wall out, and kind of expand that cafeteria. If you ever come here on extracurricular function, two of the things, two of the ones that we hold are cheerleading and wrestling. They are packed. This would just be help those groups in that space, physical nature. So high school, this is conceptually what we're looking at from a big ticket item. At the elementary school, the major thing that needs to be done at the elementary school is a complete expansion of the kitchen area. That kitchen was designed to be meals prepared in another building shipped over here, it wasn't to been designed to be a scratch cooking at the building level. And that's what we did in the 60s, the 70s, and the 80s in the building. A lot of it was shipped over, some of it was done there. But the number of meals that we're feeding now kids every day, with all kids getting breakfast and lunch, is skyrocketing. We have an average of about 150 kids every morning eating breakfast at late. We'd actually go into a vision of hiring lunch age or breakfast, just to cover the monitoring of kids. So with that, we'd be basically doubling the kitchen size. The kitchen would be kind of, if you look at it conceptually, it's taking it out almost to that sidewalk, basically doubling the size of the kitchen. One of the things that we have done in food service that we've been very good at, we're doing with the paydown of the fund balance, buying equipment and so forth, so I don't see necessarily a big ticket item in the bond for equipment, because we've done a really good job over the last couple of bonds, as well as our fund balance, paydown, buying needed equipment. Again, you see the bathrooms are highlighted here, elementary has fewer common bathrooms because most classrooms are, I have bathrooms in there, with the exception of the 200 wing, which is at the top. When we did explore that in the last bond, it would be major cost to put the plumbing in those, you'd actually lose space in the classroom, much like we did in the, to go to the 2, 1, 2, 300 hallway, which is where our first grade is, it's kind of a smaller room, except we had to shrink classrooms down to put bathrooms in it. We would actually lose classrooms if we did that. But off the kindergarten wing, we'd be looking at putting a addition on the kindergarten kid. Now you have, you're at basically six sections of kindergarten, six sections of first, you could move second grade to where first grade is, and third grade would be in its wing and still have room, then they grow. Again, these are concepts, and I looked at, so this focus on the bond is, we need space for enrollment. Where our last focus on the bond was, we need to fix a lot of stuff. And I believe it was Kyle Simmons who sat here and told me, Brian, just come back with it, what did it take for the whole thing? And it's about $40 million, and we did it. So I'm going to commend the board for approving it at that time. So here would be my plan, if the board votes tonight on authorizing me to consider going for a bond, and begin the conversation with all the stakeholders. Tonight, on December 9th, you have the vote to consider for November 25. In the January 25, sorry, 25 new communicated that's going out, which will be about mid-January, it's sent to every household in the district, you're going to see a two-page spread and an article on the front page that says, this is what we're looking at. Thanking the community for continued support for the last three bonds we've had, looking at averages of attendance, looking at the debt levy, we just recently lowered our debt levy, if you recall on the last May, we levied lots of millages, if we don't, we didn't need as much to pay our debt, which has been a positive. We did lose money in the head and the rope act, so we've lost a total of 55, I think about 55 felt, that's how bad that we've lost, did revenue, because we haven't come back to the voters, instead we override that, we haven't been in a position to need to do that. Here's where the meat and potatoes come. In February, what we would do is, I would do a presentation there specifically for February, the middle school, let's talk in the nitty gritty on the middle school, what would it need, let's look at, have open conversation, what we believe are the needs of the middle school. The 17th of that month, which would be a Tuesday, we'd hold a community forum at the middle school, inviting every parent in the district, but really focused on, what would the middle school addition look like? What would they like to see in a bond for the community, begin gathering that stakeholder input? Repeating that process in March for the high school, high school's our next building, that from a space perspective is in the most needed need. April would be elementary, so it's pretty much a three-month process that we're gathering this input. In May, we talk about the non-facility. When I talk about that, we're looking at the bus garage, because that's the only non-facility we have. But also, conversation on the board is, do you want the bond, in that bond, do you want to set aside or ask the voters to put money aside for future property purchases? And that would be a conversation the board would have. Now whether it's now, or whether it's in the future, at some point, if growth continues, a board, may not be this board, but a future board, is going to have to have that conversation, because we have no other land to build on, it's only here. And so the more we take up the field, the less the other programs have to use it. But that would be, that's where I would see that conversation happen. May 27th, if the board wanted to at that point, you could officially vote, say, we're going to authorize to go and put this on the ballot in November, at this point. My hope at that point is that there isn't a community member that doesn't know what's going on between communication going out, between meetings, between social media posts, et cetera. If for some reason the board didn't feel comfortable in May, I would recommend the absolute latest date you could do that would be at the end of June, to get it on a November ballot. So whatever that red is, whatever one is decided by the board, if the board chooses to do that, now we begin the informational campaign. We are going for a bond, and this is what this bond is packing. If you recall, when you go for a bond, you have to put a bond application together, you have to tell the voters what you're spending on site improvement, so we started that process, looking at those drawings that I just showed you. But getting that feedback from parents and social workers will finalize that process. There's plans on there, and so today I met with a communication, do mailers, do design mailers that would go home monthly, with a different focus, first mailer would be the middle school, the second would be the high school, third would be elementary school, with on each mailer, there'd be some, here's the big picture of the bond, so the parents would have that opportunity. Display boards, we created similar to what we did in the 19 bond, where we have them in lobbies for double days as people are coming in. Up the end heading, city council, the council, that's another audience, there are the people who literally don't want the school, because they don't care, but they watch those, here's another avenue. And we did that on last month, we did a informational tour, we went to every city council meeting, every council committee. We have Blue Devils nights in August, but the date isn't officially scheduled yet, because we don't have the calendar yet, which we're working on, but whatever we do, we have some informational tables there. September, but again, we could hit back on those city council meetings, that's three minutes of free advertising, if you want to look at it that way. There are public comments that we could, or ask to be on as an agenda item, but then we public comment to get the information out there. If the line team bond, we do a little bit, we have people sign up and register for, we had a tent, we have people there to give information, get the facts out there. Again, you see all of that, you'll see part of this is advertising in the paper, I'm trying to get everybody, every facet of, if you're not on social media, you read the traditional paper, there's ways that we can get information out there. But the key here is on September 20th of next year, that would be when absentee ballots are typically mailed out around that timeframe. School bonds, a different take now, that everybody could pretty much go down absentee ballot. So most bond campaigns are done at that point, because most absentee ballots are set, and I believe it was 60% in one of the latest in the last election of absentee ballots, we off of the number a little bit, it's a good chunk. So if you haven't hit those people by that time, in terms of information, they probably are no vote. October is kind of the cleanup and the last check, and then the last day in November for that. For November 4th, you'll be in 2025. So, first of all, that's question, I know I gave you a lot, but I think what I presented to you over, what we presented in August, and what Cammy presented with the finances, we've done a great job of being physically responsible for their bonds. This is a little different take, it's about space, it's about needs, and looking at enrollment. And if you just compare from the 19 bond, the class, we have more sections of stuff, it's very visible that we are increasing. Just asking getting our teachers, they've got some sections, there are about 22 in each class, so. Questions?
That was a lot of information.
I know I gave you a lot, and so my hope is that you'll vote tonight to authorize me to at least begin the interest, it is not an authorization to go for a bond, and begin having schedule those parent needs and the information out there, gather that feedback. So my goal is, if you do that, we'll be come back to you in the May timeline, or after each meeting, here's what people are saying, here's what the tech, I imagine there'll be surveys that we're sending out, how supportive are you in story of bond? Generally, no increased bond, if we have a close to 95, 100% passing rate, because you're not asking people to pay more. Again, in one year, people's economics could be different, and we could be at a different point.
You have to go to the state and have approval at the state level?
Yeah, so once, once in that May or June, once you authorize, we're going to go for bond, then we have to go to the state treasurer, we've got to get them to sign off that we can go, but that June date is the latest we can go for your November date. My recommendation is, we can do it in May, gives us a lot more time, gives us more time to talk and plan, but we get it, we'll ask when in June.
Yeah, I remember we were going to that before, and it's an intimidating experience and stuff like that.
It is. The great things we have going for us, in Cammy's ballpark, are our ratings, that increased over last year, our bond rating, our fund balance helps, our enrollment helps, all, we have a lot of good things going for us that the state's going to look at. And it's all because we've been very strategic and physically responsible as we've done, that we haven't spent beyond our needs.
Thank you very much on that. Okay. Next item on our agenda is our recognition of board members, Bartel and Oldani.
So the term of board member, board members, Bartel and Oldani, is ending December 31st. So on behalf of the Board of Education, the entire Richmond staff, and the entire student body and community, I would like to thank you too for your service for our, to our community and our students. It's truly been an honor and a blessing to work with you. We've had good days, we've had bad days, which is what having a good family, we'll deal with. But your commitment to leadership, your dedication to this district and what's right for kids is commendable, has made this district a better place, and I know Tracy, you've been here shorter time, and you also served previously, Kelly's been here a little longer than Tracy, but you've been here and you've gone through, we've gone through a lot as a district, but staying together as a board and being united and have focus for what's in the best interest of kids, so thank you, our board, by our district and our community. So if you would join me in the voting, we have a small token of appreciation, a certificate of appreciation for your time. Traditionally, when someone finishes their term on the board, or a teacher retires, or a staff member finishes, we give them a brass belt. Both board member Bartel and Oldani have declined that and asked to give a donation in behalf of the Richmond Education Foundation, for the cost of that we would normally spend the belt, so, I'm going to give you the two checks to the foundation on behalf of the board members, ending their terms. Good luck to you, and I hope we will see you around.
I just want to say on behalf of the Education Foundation, thank you for the donation because it means a lot and it'll be used very well, so thank you for that.
Hey, I'm Sarah, can I say anything? Oh, no.
Yeah, just thank you, the opportunity to be sitting here, and thank you Cynthia, for all your help in keeping us all organized. And Brian, as always, thank you for your leadership. You know, I did have a chance to be on the board a while ago, and then the unique opportunity to come back. And the school district that I've met is kind of And the school district that I've met this time around is a very different, different organization than before. And that has a lot to do with Mr. Walmsley's leadership and the decision that happened around this table. And the quality of education that goes on here is something the entire community has to be proud of and know more about. But thank you for the chance to sit here at the table.
Next item on our agenda is our Blue Devil raves. Margaret, anything?
Yeah. Saturday night, we had our annual Sandy's Kids fundraiser at the Cook Hotel, and I just want to rave our life skills class at the High School in May, gift baskets that were great, our doubles done, sent a gift basket. And so, just kudos to those kids and staff. And I want to recognize our social workers, Sam Perry, Aria Spencer, Darby Smith, and Nicole Kraft. They do great work throughout the year, and all four of them were there Saturday night to reap the benefits of what we did. And we're very, very fortunate to have those women work for us. We were able to raise $3,500, which is really, really big when you think, you know, the Cook Hotel's a really little spot. But people cram in, and it's just wonderful. And I just want to rave to the staff, Brian, Billy, Niece Pinsky, Anne Gallagher, the four social workers that I mentioned, Mike and Ashley Gibson, Kim Ellis, Kristy Blanco, Kim Durstnem, and Kat Lemon, for coming and supporting and being a part. It's always exciting when staff get there. And Deb and Sandy, as board members, thank you for coming and supporting as well.
Hey, Sandy?
I don't have anything.
Hey. No. Candace?
And Tracy? I just want to rave about, you know, we've had a couple of groups with trips, you know, come and request to be able to go. And coaches and educators who step in to do that, it's just, it's amazing for them to do it, it's extra for them to do it, and it's life-changing for the students that are involved. I have gone many times to that music convention in Grand Rapids. And the music and musicians that our student is going to be able to be around and play with is just going to change her life. And that Molly has helped her get to this point just has to be raved about, you know? So, I mentioned and lift that up. I have to say too, you know, gosh, the book vending machine, you know? Every time, or when I'm glancing and scrolling through Facebook, right, I see these pictures of these adorable faces who get the tickets to go to that vending machine, and the smiles on their faces is just extraordinary. And I just think it's just a great new addition to what's happening at Lee, and I think that, was that a PTO, PTA? Yeah. Edition. And so, I just want to rave about that.
Thank you. I have nothing. Okay. Next item on our agenda is our student board of bed reps.
All right. Lot of events coming Christmas. We'll start with the high school. As mentioned previously, the art show will officially begin tomorrow, December 10th, as well as this Thursday, we will have the band concert on December 12th, and the choir concert the week after this on Thursday, the 19th. We also have, next week, our holiday spirit wear is going to start along with our annual ugly sweater contest. It's on Friday?
Uh, yeah, I think so.
Is that what we agreed on? Okay. So, the government agreed on Friday. And finally, the esports Mario Kart team finished second in the state championship, which is mad. Congratulations to all of those a part of it. What a wonderful achievement. Moving on to middle school, girls' basketball is having their final games this week. It's been a great season, and we'd like to thank all of the athletes a part of it, as well as the coaches a part of this that really helped contribute to such a wonderful program. It's just, it's been amazing. On top of that, the girls' basketball players will also be attending the Moon Beams for Sweet Dreams event in Beaumont Hospital on Friday, yeah, December 13th. They're really looking forward to it and are excited to spread some holiday cheer to patients currently in the hospital. It's wonderful. But the middle school band concert is also this Thursday. They kind of mix them up together. So, alongside the high school, middle school will be as well at 7:00. We're looking forward to a wonderful show. The middle school Battle of the Bays begins this Wednesday at RMS. So, what it is, it's fifth or eighth grade students decorate their lockers for the holidays. And, yeah, for sure. Guest judges will show up in the form of fourth graders, and the class winners will be announced at our holiday assembly on December 20th through the winter's hour, which is super cool. We are very proud of our RMS Student Council for organizing a non-perishable food drive. That's truly wonderful. Altogether, 1,168 items were collected during the food drive, which is over 100 more than what was collected the year previous. During the Stuff the Bus event on Saturday, we collected almost 430 items, which puts our brand total from the 1,168 to the 430 to 1,594 items collected that are to be donated to local charities. We'd like to thank everyone a part of that for their support, and a special congratulations to Mrs. Buchanan's fifth grade class for collecting the most items. Next week, RMS staff and students will participate in a holiday spirit week as well, and we look forward to seeing our students decked out in their festive clothing.
And then, at the Lee School, students enjoyed lunch with the principal for the top sellers in the chocolate fundraiser to support their school. Free school bring up maxing for the annual holiday program that ensures rest of holiday cheer to all. It'll take place Monday, December 16th at 5:30 in the high school auditorium. We all mentioned we're focusing on top of leadership for the month of summer, and so do we mean Mr. Gibson. And, yeah, this Friday is the monthly PBIS assembly to discuss what great leadership is there. There's some really great students, including the qualities of positive leadership. And then, Mr. Walmsley came to acknowledge their great students, and they enjoy to have the lunch. Which, I saw my students from teacher data on the Facebook page, and it's just, they look so happy, and it just touched my heart. So, yeah, I love seeing them on Facebook. And then, they're really grateful for that ongoing support. And then, oh, in athletics, winter sports, the whole swing. varsity girls' basketball scored an exciting 28-25 win on Friday against Lake Shore. Wrestling hosted the annual George Mambler Invitational on Saturday. It's been a busy week at both the high school and middle school. So, Monday, JV and varsity girls' basketball versus Torrance City. Bowling opened their season today at Edenland City. Tuesday, high school boys' basketball versus Cross-Lex. Wednesday, MS Girls Basketball, wrestling this season against Almanac. Thursday, we'll have five high school basketball teams in action, freshman and JV boys' basketball at RMS at 4:30 and 6:00 respectively. JV girls', varsity girls', and varsity boys' basketball at 4:30, 6:00, and 7:30 at RHS. So, that's a lot going on. Friday, shears hosting the CCAM Scholarship Invitational. Saturday, powerlifting mother first competition of the year at Mount City. And then, boys' and girls' basketball will play in Dave Jackson Memorial Room at LCN against Cosno. Tip-off is at 1:00 for girls, 3:00 for boys. There's a lot going on.
Pack, pack for these.
Can I ask a question though about the concert only having standing room? Like, am I able to get in and stand?
Yes. To my knowledge, you are still, tickets are totally available. It's just, you will not have a guaranteed seat.
Okay. Which, that's fine.
We're a full house, but they're sprinkled, as far as I'm aware. You could still get in, you could still even get a seat. It just is going to be a little hard, so.
Okay.
And we had the same thing last year. We made it work. It's unfortunate, but we're kind of working around a way to sort of, maybe we'll do two show days, but again, that's not confirmed, but we're talking. You can still attend, for sure.
Okay, all right. Because I know, like, in the past, they do things in the aisleways and stuff.
Yes. And there are that where they will have people who attend and cannot find a seat, they'll be on, because there's a lot of space in there that isn't being taken by the performers. So.
So, they'll tell you where you can stand.
You're not going to be in the production.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to make sure of.
Yeah, we got spotlight right in center stage.
You want us to spotlight out?
Yeah, you can get the full musical experience. Anyway, yeah, you can still totally come. That's okay for anybody who's willing to. Tickets are still, just not a guaranteed seat.
Okay, got it.
Fair enough. Anybody else have any other questions?
Oh, I got that though. That goes out to Lake Orion Saturday. I think we're leaving, like, it's 6:30. 6:30. Oh, the meeting's not till tomorrow, so I didn't know that yet.
Spoilers.
Yay!
Well, good luck! Okay, we good now? All good. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Our next item is our super technical legislative. Thanks for listening.
Yeah, I'm going to start with legislative. We are in lame duck session. So, last week, five bills were sent to the floor. They're actually now on the House floor to consideration, all dealing with school safety. One of them establishes standard response terminology and requires all schools to adopt it. What they're recommending is what we currently do. Second bill, 409, first one's 4095, the second one's the House Bill 4096, which, again, talks about standard response terminology. We already knew that. 5549 requires schools to establish threat assessment teams. We have them in everyone up buildings, and all of our staff have been trained in threat assessments. We can check that one out. 5659 revises the membership of the school safety commission. It kind of solidifies that they're in the school safety at the state level. And then, 5660 makes an update in the law that references the school safety. Those are on the House floor to consideration. I'm going to list a lot of bills. I don't know what's going to actually settle out because once it's released, it's got to stay five days. In order for things to get passed, if we're just talking party politics, every Democrat has to show up for any of these to pass because if it's just going to, people are going to vote by party, but the Democrats are currently having control. So, we'll see. House Bill 5174, this one came out of left field, I didn't realize this one. But there's requiring school districts to have an hour of instruction for students to adopt the model program for instructions on how to be an eye, organ, tissue donor, and transplant. If passed, it would require students beginning in ninth grade to have this hour of instructions on how to be a donor.
Instruction that's not to be involved?
One hour during the study.
Yeah, it's one hour. Parents, parents have the option of opting out of it, but it'd be one hour of instruction for ninth graders.
Okay.
So, but this one came out of left field.
That's, I haven't seen it. That's on, it would start in the primary school.
Oh, interesting.
The other one that's reported to the, from the House Education Committee that's actually under the House floor to be voted, which is a lot of support, is the Michigan mayor reviewing, removing specific course titles. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago. Basically saying, you got to have three credits in math. What those credits are will be decided for base on the student. That would be very good for local districts and districts and general. The one we're watching out on, there's two House bills. One is House Bill 6058, which was voted out of committee along party lines and is now advancing to the House floor, which deals with health care caps. The bill would increase health care contribution cap, basically changing the hard cap number. We talked about collective bargaining and so forth, what employers obligations are. For new employers contributing to the floor would be an 80% rule, and there's a lot of logistics on this. We're watching these very closely because some of the bills say it starts January 1st, which would affect our budget and health care. Typically, any changes to health care, if we've got an existing contract, goes in after the contract. This particular one starts at January 1st, even if there's a contract consisting. There's another one that Senator Bartel introduced, Senate Bill 1129 and 1130, which would basically, instead of raising the hard cap, would mandate an 80-20 system, which basically means the employer pays 80% of the insurance cost, the employee pays 20% of the insurance cost. Depending on the insurance plan, that could be a savings for the employee, it could be an increase for the employee based on the insurance plan. When I say that, blue cross, blue cross means, et cetera. Other things that we're watching are lame duck. House Bill 4027, called the Purple Star Program for Schools, which would designate a school official to be the military liaison. Districts would opt in if they want to. We'd have to designate a person to be our connection with the military here in the district. Senate Bill 3354, we talked about reforming teacher certification and exams, basically having the Michigan Department of Education create the exam, changing licenses, the requirements for on the state teachers to get initial certification. That one we're watching. There's also Senate Bill passed that Protect My Kids Bill Pact, that ended reducing youth tobacco use and holding tobacco sellers accountable. We're watching that and how that affects schools. Other bills that were introduced last year but are still in the process, again, the process is running out of time, but anything that actually worked before they go on recess and the new Congress starts, the new Senate, et cetera. Senate Bill 1142, which is modifying requirements for renewing school council credentials. We're watching that one. 1145 from the Senate requires one unit of instruction in each of the categories of race and ethnicity, African-American, indigenous people, Asian, Pacific Islander, Latin American descent. We'd have to do one unit of instruction in each one of those for students.
Does it take brick level?
No, it does not at this point. Senate Bill 1146, which requires teachers and administrators to have instruction in professional development and cultural competency. 1147 creates a cultural history advisory board. 1168, totally lame ducks crazy a lot. You get it onto the wall and see what started, gets what's 1168. 1176, creating behavioral threat assessments and management program funds. That would be beneficial. They'll pay for those training. There's things about prevailing wage acts if you default on your bond proposal, mandating that hygiene products are in schools for eligible for students, both male and female. There's a whole list of stuff. Can't sleep tonight, I'll send you a link. It's crazy. I too want to congratulate the esports team, Coach Campo and Coach Hill and the entire team taking second in the state. It's pretty remarkable. They do a fall and a spring season. In two years, we've had three state championships in a second round, so it's pretty cool for what they've done. And the facility they went to is at Michigan State University, and if you don't know about it, they built it at Tiger Compl. It's literally right next door to Spartan Stadium, that it's the esports facility. It's phenomenal. So, if you're into that, consider Michigan State as one of your options. A lot of concerts and choirs going on this week and next week, as you heard, dates. The band concert is full. We are looking for future, look at what are our options, and we may have to get to a point of splitting that up back to a middle school, high school, just because of numbers. If you ordered your holiday cookies from the culinary program, excuse me, their pickup is December 18th, 2:30 to 5:30, and December 19th, from 2:30 to 4:00. I'll be there on the 18th, so if you want to taste them, I'll tray-walk it out, so tomorrow. Just a reminder to the community, Friday, December 20th is a half-day of school, with holiday break officially beginning on Monday, the 23rd, and going through January 1st. We report back to school, staff, and students on January 1st. We report back to school, staff and students on January 2nd. Most districts do go until the Monday, will be coming back earlier, so just keep that in mind as you're planning your calendar. Finally, I just want to wish everybody a wonderful and happy holiday, frank, safe one, and before we go, we'll be back on January 7th. That's all there.
Next item on our agenda is our items of interest from the Board. Tracy.
I don't have any.
Candace.
So I just wanted to give a personal thank you to Kelly O'Donnell for all your time on the board, and your surplus energy to our students. It's very appreciated. And Tracy, thank you for volunteering to come back. Very honorable, and I appreciated all your story and sharing of the history. You're part of the community of the Warren Woods currently is to know what has gone on in the past, and you brought a lot of that to us in that short period of time, so I appreciate you for that. Thank you. The other, Brian and I attended the MSBA meeting over at the Warren Woods Public Schools, and so we got to tour their hospital, which was nice, and see some of their CTE programs that they have, and so the magnets that everybody has, I grabbed one action for everyone, I guess, students, make those and sell them. Actually, so, so, that, and I think, I think that's a happy holidays. Thank you.
Sandy.
I just, real quickly, just want to wish everybody, the rich and staff, students, board members, central, everybody a happy holidays.
Thank you. Dan.
No.
Margaret.
I'd like to, the same, wish everybody in the district, in the community, and their families, safe and happy holidays. And I just, I was gonna have Dan do it for me, and I forgot to get my stuff to her, but I wasn't at our last meeting when we did Brian's evaluation, so I just wanted to have the opportunity to thank him for the work that he continues to do, the great work, and been with you since the beginning, don't regret a minute of it, you probably do at times, but just thank you, we are where we are because of what you continue to do for us every year with your leadership, so, thank you.
I would just like to personally, a real funny comment, you know that I draw popsicle sticks, right, to pull your names, when I do this, when I drew them this time, it went in order. Alphabetic. That is really, that is, that is really, I can't figure out, I mean, what are the odds? What message is it? Anyway, I too wish to, to thank, thank and wish all of our families, our staff, my board, our board members here, to have a safe, healthy, enjoyable, restful holiday. We will see you back in a jiffy. Okay, next item on our agenda is public comments. Since the last board meeting, the board has not received any emails, and there were no public comments that needed addressing this evening, so at this time...
She wants to say something.
Yeah, but she'll, she'll...
You'll have to reveal first, hold on.
At this time, any member of the public may address the board, please sign in, state your name, you'll have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments?
Is there a...
They love that.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
That's okay.
There's also a box on there, if you want a response from either Dan, myself, or no response, it's up to you. You've never done this before.
So I'd like to introduce myself first off, before I start. My name is Caitlin Schmelaski. I am a mother to a current GSRP student in the district. I'm also a teacher in the district, and I've been here for about eight years, I think January will be about nine. I'm speaking tonight in regards to the layoffs that have been happening in our preschool department, one of them being more at the beginning of the year, and then two of them that you'll be voting on tonight. I just want to kind of voice my concerns that go with laying off teachers in the classroom, and would just kind of like you guys to be aware as you could take your, your votes. Our preschool department is the beginning of Richmond's willing for most families, like you all have known, and Mr. Wombley has said, and it's been a privilege to watch it grow over these last years that I've been here. But as, you know, things happen and problems arise, and you have to make solutions for things, we just also want you guys to be aware of the concerns that we have as teachers and as parents moving forward with these layoffs. As Mr. Wombley has mentioned, we want teachers to be able to have breaks. We have a teacher right now that has one teacher in the classroom, she works for seven and a half hours with no breaks, that is no bathroom breaks, no lunch breaks, no preps, nothing like that. She utilizes the support from her teachers in the hallway for all those things, running to the printer, checking her mailbox, all those kinds of things. And unfortunately, it's gonna happen to two more teachers when these layoffs happen. Getting students on and off buses, getting our food carts for breakfast and lunchtime, and then there's the student aspect of explaining to our students and our parents, the, you know, why their friends are moving classrooms, why their teachers are not going to be there during the day. There are people in this district, in this program, that want to be here, and no matter what, we will make sure that it works for our kids, because that's what we do. We love what we do, and we put our students first. But we also have a great group of teachers that support each other, and we would just like to see that same support and value returned to us. Like I said, our number one goal is our students, and we would like to have discussions with outside about the possible options that do not disturb our students' learning and school experiences. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? I am, we're gonna do a list of action items here, so, looking for a motion for the approval of the resolution summer tax collection.
I have a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve a 2025 summer property tax levy to collect all school property taxes in each city or township in which this district is located, as outlined in the attached resolution.
Do I support? Yep, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the overnight extended trip request to Gaylord, Michigan.
I have a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the overnight extended student trip to Gaylord, Michigan, as presented and outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of the overnight trip to Florida.
I have a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the overnight extended student trip to Grand Records, Michigan, as outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I support? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Looking for the approval of an overnight extended trip request in Michigan.
I have a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the overnight extended student trip to Grand Rapids, Michigan, as outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I support? Second. Any discussion? All those in, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Looking for the approval, our motion, I'm sorry, looking for a motion for the approval of the REA unpaid leave of absence request.
I have a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve Kayla Yost's unpaid leave request, extending her leave of absence from December 12, 2024, to January 1, 2025, returning to work on January 2, 2025, as outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of resolution to consider a voter-approved, no-increase village.
I have a motion to authorize the superintendent to explore the feasibility of potential framework of voter-approved, no-increase village proposal to address enrollment growth and facility needs. Furthermore, as outlined in the attached resolution, the board directs the superintendent to organize and facilitate at least three community forums, to, one, represent the concept and details of the proposed village, two, gather feedback and input from parents, community members, and other stakeholders, and three, ensure full transparency by addressing any questions or concerns raised by the public.
Do I have support?
Yep.
That's me. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of the 14th amendment of the contract with superintendent.
I have a motion to approve the 14th amendment of the contract with superintendent as presented in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose.
Aye.
Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of the high school, elementary school replacement doors.
I have a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract that supposes less for elementary, high school exterior doors, for an amount that exceeds $100,945, plus 10% for unknown site conditions, as outlined in the attached documentation, for which funding from the 2022 bond, fiscal year 2025 building and grounds improvement set aside and the non-bond capital project funds are authorized. Furthermore, the board operates, the superintendent, to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board protecting policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of funds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by voters of Richmond Community Schools, for which funding from the 2022 school building and site bond series two is available.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Looking for the motion, I'm looking for a motion for approval of the revised resolution to lay off early learning childhood center employees.
I have a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the revised attached resolution and layoff two, Richmond's early learning childhood center employees due to lower than expected enrollment.
Do I have support? Any discussion?
I would like to have a little bit more information. I think, I think a lot of information about action.
This, this one, the only thing different from the previous one that you approved, was there was an issue with the seniority date with one of the employees, so on the original one, there was two employees listed, one on a different story date, we had to fix the seniority list. So there's just updates, revisions on the list, of what was approved in the last one. One of the two was on the previous list.
Wasn't the last one for one? No, it was two?
As, as we said at public count, there was one that played off in September, right after school started.
Okay, right.
And it goes back to, we expected ninety kids, we're at sixty-five, I'm not sure if that's sixty-six one, and ninety kids, I did a ballpark, we were expecting nine hundred thousand dollars in revenue, with this number, we're about six hundred thousand, or a third of the revenue, and if we maintain staffing for the full time, it was quite a bit of money that we would have to find to pay for.
Right, and I don't remember, what is the, is there like a student teacher ratio in those rooms?
One to ten for just the teacher, one to eighteen with the teacher, lead teacher and associate teacher.
And so like, are we, where are we at with those numbers?
We would have three classrooms of ten, one classroom of eighteen, and one classroom of seventeen.
So all pretty much maxed out? Remind me again of the doubt I was figuring, that if we continue, if we continued the way it was, you, you would give them that to us at some point, and I just, I, I don't remember what you said.
Brian, is one of them, uh, taken a position?
Uh, one of them has taken a kindergarten aid, but care providers accepted it, and that one. And then the other one currently doesn't have a position, so we have some open business over here, I mean, obviously anybody can apply, but it would be offered. Do I expect that they, if they take this, I don't expect anybody to be officially laid off from the position, but it's a, it's a different position than what they have now.
I don't know.
I'm looking, Margaret, to see, I don't know if I have that in front of me.
And the, and part of the reason I'm throwing it out is just thinking through the kindergarten, when we did, we didn't, we didn't break up those classrooms, best interest of the kids, and we got the, the pair of them, so I, that's why I'm asking the doubt, because that was a conversation that we had, correct, of what it was gonna cost us, what we could do to keep it, but I know GSRP, I know things are different, so that, I'm sorry, Brian, but I just don't remember what you said.
If, and I don't have another meeting in the timeframe for me to be here, but I guess I would. If I were remaining, I would be interested in hearing why it is potentially, would there might be a teacher that doesn't have a break, that as mentioned, that's in public comment, you know, why that's happening, and if these layoffs impact that, and make it more of a standard, that's something that really needs to be talked about, because that's just not right, as far as I'm concerned, so.
I don't have that information, I'm trying to find it on my computer. To answer your question, Tracy, yes, that is the, what's currently happening as a teacher uses, all the GSRP you with the kid, so there's some coordination. I will tell you, you gotta remember, this is the first year we have a collective bargaining agreement with this group.
Right.
And the proposal that was on the table from the district was that when we came to this situation, we would notify them thirty days, and if we didn't have an agreement within ninety days, or six, I think it's thirty days after that, of quote, then we would have to do some type of reduction. The union did not approve that proposal. Their proposal was, you guys determine the staffing letters, based on a role, you guys control whether you have want to increase expense or not. So the only way that we can keep within the budget, is we put the proposal on the table, is that this program specifically, we would do everything we can to stay within the budget. You gotta remember, this, this group, collective bargaining, got holidays, additional days, instruction, they, there is costs that were added based on this contract, so when you factor all of that in, the only thing we have to do is... this contract. So when you factor all of that in, the only thing we have to do is, if we're to stay within the budget, and we have basically two-thirds less revenue, the only option we have is to reduce personnel. That wouldn't have been the place if we had at least agreed to partially put the district, I put it on the table, back then, if we took two years, I think it was two years, to negotiate a contract. All right, so I get, I get the frustration and so forth, but with the response that I have from the leadership in the union, I'm not talking about our teachers, I'm talking about who represents them, and lay people off, you guys control it. Well, yeah, and it was set at the table, we would be the bad guys if we have to lay them off, rather than working together to find a solution, which is what we propose. If our proposal would have been agreed to, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. They would all be hired, and we would be, it wouldn't be until about probably March or April that we'd have to impose something. So while I can deal for them, and I'm trying, I have to follow the contract. And if the board wants to find them, and I don't know, Tammy, if you found it indoors, the dollar, it was significant. I mean, we have already taken the cost of Mike Gibson out of the grant completely, so that is 100% costed. So there's about $25,000 that was normally in the grant that we're now paying out of general fund. We have reduced supply budgets, we have reduced, there are certain fees we have to pay. I want to say it was like $60,000, $70,000 that we have to come up with.
Sixty-eight thousand.
Again, I'm going by my memory, but it was a large chunk that, again, you know, their union leadership, and I say, I'm not talking about our people, MEA who represent them, did not even ask to come to the table and say, is there another solution to this situation? The response at the table was, if you have to make cuts to stay within the budget, then you have to lay people off. That's my only option, unless the board wants to say, we're going to spend, again, I give you that number, and we'll spend it. But I mean, I don't have any other option. And again, the, the union leadership got called prior to Thanksgiving, was given a heads up before this went to the 25th board meeting, that this was happening. At no time have they reached out saying, can we, can we talk? Can we come up with a solution? And the only reason why it's on here is, again, there was a question on the seniority. We went back, we reviewed it. One of the persons named that was on the November 25th resolution should depend, so this is correcting that error on the 25th.
But both- So we've already approved-
We've already approved two layoffs. This is correcting the layoff. We've already notified the two individuals that are matched to this resolution that they're being laid off. We've been working with those two individuals, and I say work with what we can do to try, is there another option? The one has insurance. If she took this position as long as our state, the insurance would verify with the engine states. It just doesn't comply with the grant. But those, that question about the hours, I believe, and I will follow up, that Monday, that, or Friday, that was the days in the timeline of yet today, that Mr. Gibson was to sit down with the GSRP and talk about the district. You know, the other thing I have to worry about, or have to be cautious about, is agreements filing, that when we try to help and fix these, that is perceived that I'm taking work from one bargaining unit and giving to another. This is the group. That, that's what you have when you have a collective bargaining agreement. You have little flexibility, because you have to follow the agreement.
So just so I'm, I'm clear again with the numbers that we just talked about in the classrooms, right? So two, you said two classrooms, 10?
Three classrooms.
Three classrooms, 10.
We have 10, beginning January 2nd.
Okay, and then?
17 and 18. 18 is the map.
So nothing outside of licensing norms?
No.
Right.
No, it, it, within the-
It stays within-
We would be, we have one spot technically available in that classroom in 17, and I believe there was a student, but now that I think of it, I think they opted out, out that was removed. So technically, we have one spot available, and if we had two people come, we're putting them on a waiting list. Because at some point, I have to tell the ISD, we're giving up these slots, and they're going to another district. And it's become, unless they come up with more for the state to give us more slots, this becomes our slot number going forward.
Right, got it, right.
And it's, they tried. I mean, and I say they, Mr. Gibson and staff, they've done advertising, we did newspaper, they did signed lawn, they did banners, posted on official media, they walked in the parade. They, we have tried. The challenge, we have a lot of GSRP programs that are, and I'll put it out there again. Our neighbor to the west has a five-day program. I brought to the table, asking for a five-day program in order to keep people. If I'm a parent that needs something five days, and we don't offer it, and they can go next door and get it for free, not a rocket scientist figured that one out, but that was declined at the table.
So, can we, can we make any attempt at now to try to work with those teachers who don't have any break, or is that Mr. Gibson's-
I will follow up with Mr. Gibson. It's Friday, that was supposed to be the conversation with him on Friday. Well, we outlawed, and the board approved the resolution on the 25th, and we purposely did not tell any staff members till the 23rd, because we did not want to ruin their holiday. We told the union leadership on Tuesday before the break and asked them, let's get through Thanksgiving, let the holiday go. We notified staff on the 3rd. The Friday was the meeting Mr. Gibson was supposed to have, and I can have a follow-up, I have not followed up with them. Tomorrow, I gave you a copy, is the letter that's going out to all GSRP parents. Beginning Wednesday, Mrs. Gibson, or Mrs. Gibson, Ms. Mangudi and Mr. Gibson are beginning to contact the parents personally of those seven kids that we're going to have to move.
So seven kids.
It's seven kids that we have to move to get into compliance for licensing ratio. And then those would then, they would start on the 2nd. The 2nd was fixed because it's a natural break. It's, no, again, none of this is what I want to do, and I don't think the board wants to do, but we only have so many dollars in GSRP.
We didn't find the amount.
What, what, what dollar amount are you asking for?
Remember that spreadsheet you had? What was the total amount that if we kept things as-is in the program?
$217,000.
That had the, that had the, um, it had the playground equipment that we took out. It's that second, it's the, I can picture the spreadsheet.
I can see.
It's the column on the far right, where we only put, what we absolutely needed was staff, but that, I would say, it was, it was at least $80,000.
How much did you count the, the money? $40,000?
Because we had a budget, if we had $900,000, the full amount, we had planned on playground equipment, we planned, we had all the teacher costs and everything covered, we had planned on program improvements for that, that program. And again, I can picture the spreadsheet, would it be under the board folder, for the budget folder?
I've been looking for, you know, I'm searching. Do you put it under the board?
I'm looking under the budget folder to see if it's in there. Here's a 10-9 original GSRP budget. See in here? Can you put the number here? $101,000 that we'd have to come up with, and I'm going to have to look at this sheet here, we had the- All right, so this, this is, and Tammy, this is from October 9th, so it might not be the most up-to-date, but this is one of the, this was the original that we put in, and it came to, when you look at the bottom of this chart, it came to about $916,000. It was 63 students at the time we did this, and the nine current staff members. Again, we took out, you know, we took out the playground, we're not going to do that anymore. We took out family and parent activities, we're not paying for any evening activity, which is a requirement of the program. We took out the administrative fees, so we're not, the cost for edge of staff for subbing would be there. We took out all the advertising, we took out field trips, parents would have to pay for field trips. We took out program coordinators using Mike, portion of his salary. We took out, we'd have to have the early child special, because that's a requirement, and we don't have one currently fits the requirement of the grant. It's really this orange column. Food costs, we budgeted $2,000 a classroom, we significantly reduced it. Birth and salary, I'm guessing it's the 200 miles. But we can keep it exactly as a nine staff, four classrooms with two, one classroom with one, with 60, it'd be a little bit more, because there's 65 students, but it's about 100,000 hours. Eliminate the building subs, you got 60,000 or whatever. I'm just saying, it's squeezing the balloon is what we're doing. We could say, Billy, pause on the electives, forget all that, and that would pay it. But those, of course, have not been updated in years. I mean, it's never been, since I've been here.
Bottom line is, so we've already approved it.
You already approved the resolution, it's just adjusting the names, officially the correct names are on there based on the, based on the seniority list. And the MEA, just so you know, the MEA has requested the seniority list, and we gave it, and so I believe we gave it, we got the budget, and they asked for the budget, we've given them all the budget.
So we really can't unapprove what we did. All we're doing is-
Yeah, I mean, I-
This, this is just to approve the-
The new language.
Correct. Yes. It's not, it's not about to- No. Approve doing. Correct. It's to make it accurate. Correct. The only thing that I'd like to see is, I'd like to know what we're doing if we have someone who's teaching, I mean, doesn't even have a break or whatever.
Well, that's my, that's a good one.
Okay, is there any other discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Okay, a note for the business. The board will adjourn at 10:43.